Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the August 16th, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair of the Board. This is to formally advise it as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, its Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on August 16th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided in the meeting notice on the Town website. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein. Jim Saban.
Present.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Chris Vincent.
Here.
Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I can now call the meeting to order, and I would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. [inaudible] Thank you. I just would like to make one note. Oh, I guess he changed his ID. Thank you, Jim. First on our agenda this evening is an approval not required, A&R Plan Number 2497-G. The applicant owner is John G. Holbrook Jr., 272 Union Street, Yarmouth Port, Massachusetts. The property is Assessor Map 107, Parcel 13.1.3, Center Resident, R4 Residential, R40 Residential Zoning District and the APD Zoning District. This A&R Plan creates an unbuildable lot for conveyance purposes. The applicant, Mr. Holbrook, is represented by Attorney Matthew Fitzsimmons. Welcome, Matt. Please walk us through the A&R application, which I understand we got an update today, so if you wouldn't mind, welcome.
Thank you. And good evening, Attorney Matt Fitzsimmons. I represent John Holbrook and have for some time. It's actually, just to familiarize you with the location of the property, it's just north of the Old Exede Cloverleaf. It's been a property in his family for a very long time, particularly the homestead property and other land that he's accumulated. It has come time for him to work toward retirement, and part of that process is also looking at a way to subdivide his property in a way that fits with the current use and with the foreseeable use going forward for his neighbor to the rear who's purchasing a portion of it. And so that leads us to the A&R Plan that we've prepared. With the help of Kathy Williams, we've had really helpful input to provide some specificity and correction to some prior recorded plans that had been done historically, that some of which hadn't even led to a conveyance. So this is really an opportunity to put everything on one plan, including wetland designations and so forth. And so what Mr. Holbrook has contemplated here is the sale of the rearmost portion labeled Parcel E to his neighbor to the rear, and then separately, he'll be conveying the remaining land together with his homestead property that's on Union Street proper to other buyers. And so what we'd be asking for this evening would be approval of the plan so as to allow for each of those conveyances to then occur. Commensurate with that, I've been working with Town Council on a 61A designation as the land currently sits within as an agricultural designation. The portion of the property that the buyers of the homestead property, so the bulk of the land, the plan is for those buyers to carry forward, and they've already agreed to and will assume, the 61A designation for agricultural purposes going forward. Mr. Sage of Forest Keepers to the Rear is going to continue with the use of the property without the 61A designation. So following today's hearing, an approval of plan would then allow us to ask the Board of Selectmen to waive its right of first refusal to the soon-to-be non-exempt 61A piece Parcel E. And so procedurally, that's where we are in the process. So as an overview, this then would be the first step of a few through Town Hall to then allow for the conveyances to occur.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, your comments in your planner report?
Yeah, I had worked back and forth with some edits that needed to be made, and I received the plan that I gave you an 11-by-17 copy of on your dais here before the meeting. And they responded to all the comments that I had, and I'm happy with it.
So may I have a motion to endorse Plan Approval Not Required, A&R Plan Number 2497-G, prepared by Circumspect Landing Surveying, dated August 16th. Is it dated today?
It's 15th.
Dated August 15th, 2023.
Second.
Take a roll call. Susan Britta?
Yes.
Will Rubenstein. Jim Saban?
Aye. Sorry about that. Took me a minute to get to you.
That's okay. Peter Slovac?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Chris Vincent?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
We have an approval unanimously. Good luck with that, and we will sign.
We're gonna need, we didn't have a chance to get the Mylar in and all the plans available, but I'll let you know for the signature for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Yes, likewise.
In a different environment.
That's right. Yes, thank you.
See you on the river.
Yeah.
The next item on our agenda this evening is another approval not required, A&R Plan Number 2939. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod Incorporated. The owner of the property is MRL Realty LLC and Shoestring Properties LLC, and the property is right across the street at 1121 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Assessor Map 50, Parcels 108, 108.1, and it lands in a B2 zoning district. This A&R Plan divides an existing condominium lot into two separate lots. The applicant, Habitat for Humanity, is here, and I'm not sure if members, are you Mr. Reedy from?
Yes.
You are, from J.M. Riley and Associates, they're representative. So if we could do some quick introductions, and then if you could run through your plan, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Again, as you mentioned, Robert Reedy from J.M. O'Reilly and Associates here, representing Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, who's the applicant. And this is Beth Wade, the Land Director for Habitat for Humanity, who's here with me if you have any questions for Habitat. The two owners of the properties, as you mentioned, are MRL Realty and Shoestring Properties LLC. The reason that Habitat is involved, just a little bit of background, is that they have intent of potentially developing Lot 2. That's what we're here for today, is to divide this condominium lot into two lots so that there's a separation between a future Habitat lot and the dental office space that's still existing there. So what we have in front of you is an A&R Plan that has already been kind of reviewed with Town Offices. Both Kathy and Mark Grills, the Building Commissioner, have had a chance to review and provide comments, and we've addressed all of their revisions as they've given us so far. We are meeting the requirements of an A&R Plan in that we are meeting all zoning requirements. Both divided lots will have adequate access to public ways. We're both providing, both lots will have adequate frontage on said ways. And we also provided, in addition to the A&R Plan, a second plan, which is that site plan showing improvements to Lot 1. That's just addressing some zoning requirements for Lot 1. As you'll know, we are removing some of the existing parking that would be on the future Habitat lot. We're replacing that with three new spots, also moving some stormwater structures that are on the future Habitat lots so that they will be, you know, we're putting a new essentially drainage structure to replace it so that, you know, we're not making the stormwater situation any worse on Lot 1. And then also, in terms of addressing the landscape buffer, we've set the divided property line so that it's 10 feet minimum offset from the existing and proposed developed, you know, limits on Lot 1, which is essentially the back of the parking area there. And we're proposing a 10-foot landscape buffer zone in there. So you can see we are proposing some landscaping in addition to what's already there, because there is already a decent amount of landscaping and natural area that already exists on the outside of that parking area. I don't think there's really any other lot improvements, it's Lot 1, that are proposed, and everything else, still to be determined in the future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Kathy, you wanted to just make any comments with regard to your memo, and then any questions from Board members after that?
I think many of you may remember that this had been a VCOD project. It's located in the VC4, and it was mixed use with the commercial with the dental, and then having nine condominium units in three triplexes in the area that would essentially be Lot 2. The town went out, the Affordable Housing Trust went out for a request for proposals for some affordable housing, and Habitat responded and has been working very closely with the town in order to kind of separate this condominiumized property into two separate lots so that they can build, I'm not sure how many houses?
I think we're at five, Kathy.
Five houses where nine had been originally proposed, but they'd be separate, single-family homes.
Yes. Any questions from the Board? Ms. Britta?
Is this still the project that's Veterans' Preference? Is this still the one that Habitat was doing for Veterans' Preference?
So we have agreed that we would be willing to do a Veterans' Preference, yes. Any other questions for Board members?
No.
I see there are lots of members of the public, and I tend to want to engage. If anyone is here with regard to this A&R and wants to say anything, I'd be more than glad to hear any comments you might have. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Jim, Mr. Saban, sorry.
Just a point of reference. If you could ask the members of the Board, speak into their microphones. I can't hear what they're saying. So Ms. Britta, just comment. I couldn't hear what she said. Thank you.
I'll ask Ms. Britta to ask her question again. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Your question about Veterans' Preference.
Oh, all right. I just wanted to double-check that this was the project that we were, we had talked about ages ago, about the Veterans' Preference, and you answered yes. Thank you.
It was a question about Veterans' Preference. Can you hear us now, Jim? Mr. Saban, can you hear us better now?
Yes, Madam Chairman, and I always appreciate looking out for our veterans. Thank you for asking.
Okay, great. Thank you. We didn't ask where in the world are you?
I am currently in Port Angeles, Washington. We came over on the ferry at 9 o'clock last night from Vancouver, British Columbia.
Oh, nice.
Couple more weeks, we'll be home.
Okay, looking forward to seeing you. Okay, with no further questions, may I have a motion to endorse Plan Approval Not Required, A&R Plan 2939, prepared by J.M. Riley Associates and dated August 4th, 2023?
It's a moved.
Second.
Great. We'll take a roll call again. Susan Britta?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Peter Slovac?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Chris Vincent?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
Approval unanimous. Thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. Next on our agenda is public hearing for road application 2023-1. I would now like to open the public hearing on this application. I note the time as 5:48, 58:48. Following the protocol for public hearings, the first thing I'd like to do is read into the public record the public hearing notice that was published in the Cape Cod Times on August 1st and 8th, 2023, and sent to a Butters on August 2nd, 2023.
Madam Chair, should I step out?
Yes.
I think maybe you can just identify.
Peter Slovac. I am a Butter next door at the commercial property, so I'm going to be stepping out for this part of the hearing.
Peter is going to recuse himself from this discussion and the vote. Thank you, Peter. Public hearing notice, Yarmouth Planning Board, in accordance with the Revitalization Overlay Architectural District (ROAD) provisions outlined in Section 411.6 of the Yarmouth Zoning Bylaw, the Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, at 5:30 PM, in the hearing room of the Yarmouth Town Office, 1146 through 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664, and via remote access at our website or via telephone, and to consider the following. Road application, 2023-1. Owner/applicant, Katerina and Family LLC and J. Ahmad, trustee of the Cedars of Lebanon Trust, 381 Camp Street, West Yarmouth, Mass. 02673. Property location, 1272, 1276, and 1282, Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. Assessor map, 60, Parcels 130, 131, and 132. Zoning Districts B2, HMOD1, and ROAD. The applicant seeks approval for a Revitalization Overlay Architectural District Development Plan using Zoning Bylaw Section 411. This modified project would demolish all existing buildings on three adjoining properties and construct a gasoline filling station with four dispensers and overhead canopy, a 3,890 square foot convenience store with coffee shop and drive-through, a separate 3,755 square foot two-story building with four residential units, and various site improvements. The lots currently contain five cottages, a convenience store, and two gas pumps with canopy. Any required zoning relief for the project would be via submission to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Copies of the plans and application materials are on file with the Planning Board and may be inspected Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. in the Planning Division Office at the Yarmouth Town Offices and on the Town of Yarmouth website. Any person wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated above. Written comments will be accepted and should be directed to the Planning Board, care of Kathy Williams, Town Planner at K. Williams at yarmouth MA MS, no later than August 15th at 5:00 p.m. Yarmouth Planning Board, Joanne Crowley, Chair. Just following some protocols on public hearings, we've been through this a couple of times before with this. Mr. Tardif, thank you for coming, and I see the, again, we're looking at this application. I think we looked at it back in June of '22. We looked at it again in January of '23, and we have a new application here this evening. So I would ask Mr. Tardif to introduce himself and go through the plan. After the presentation of the proposal, we will have Kathy Williams review her planner report, and she has received some written comments, and she will review those. And then we will have initial questions from the Planning Board members, and then we will ask the public for their comments. And then the Planning Board will then deliberate on the application. So let's start. Mr. Tardif, welcome again.
Okay.
And let us know what the new project looks like.
Very good. Thank you very much. And for the record, I'm Paul Tardif, an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and seated with me is Hal Chuba, who's the engineer. J. Ahmad is also in attendance. And it's good to see you again. Our third time on this site with three different projects, but we think that this is a very good project, that we've basically incorporated a lot of the comments that we heard last time from both this board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Butters as well. We have already presented this particular project to the Site Plan Review Team on June 6th, the Community and Economic Development Committee on July 10th, and also to the Design Review Committee on July 18th. And as you indicated in the notice, we are combining three lots on Route 28, you know, in the road zoning district. It's also the B2 zoning district, of course. There is an existing gas station, convenience store with a canopy, which was built in approximately 1942. The five rental units built in approximately 1936, and a recently demolished structure housing a pottery shop to the, I guess that'd be the west. So the plan is to raise those structures and to replace it with a less non-conforming canopy, a building containing a drive-through coffee shop and convenience store, obviously keep the gas station there. And also, the twist on this plan is that we now have taken the housing that we proposed for the top of that building, housing the convenience store and the coffee shop, and created a separate standalone building on the far east part of these lots to basically segregate that a little bit. Most of the comments that we had heard throughout the process the last time was that there was a fear that there would be a mix between those two, a little too much, either crossing a road by foot, parking, maybe insufficient parking. So that's the plan at this point, is to create a separate building, still with four residential units, each with two bedrooms on two stories. The parking is located on the far east side of the building. You can see right here. And what we've done, too, is we've added a few extra parking spaces there. I believe there are nine spaces now, which will allow for, you know, guests and other type of, you know, visitors to come to the property. It is divided with an island that's going to be vegetated, and then the, you can see the turning radius that we have on there. We're staying with the four pumps. I know we had initially, the very first one, I think it was six, and we went down to four. The building is still primarily located where it was in the last project, except we've moved it a little closer to the road to get that distance that we need away from the residential property for the drive-through. We don't meet the 100-foot at this point for the drive-through lane, but I can tell you that we have one order board that has been moved further away from the residential lots, and it's on the plan that you have. And the pickup window itself, we have moved to the other side of the building. So it's not going to be on the back of the building now. They're going to make the turn and pick it up on the far west side of the property with facing out toward 28 into that one-way out. So we think that that's gonna, well, first of all, it accommodates more cars. I don't know if we're going to need them all the time, but the line itself is still going to be about 50 feet away from the residential zone, but the order board itself is going to be about 100 or 100, more than 100, 100?
190.
100. Yeah, so it's pretty far away. We've moved it about as far as we can by moving the building up to 28. So we're trying to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors, some of the comments from this board, the Zoning Board of Appeals as well. So I don't know if you want me to go through the road bylaw again in precision with every last detail. I can do that. You know, again, I think that we meet all the criteria. There are a number of them in this bylaw, as you know, under 411.5. There's some general criteria. You don't have to find all of them. It specifically says that. It says, "A proposal need not necessarily satisfy all criteria in order to receive the approval of any of the reviewing boards or authorities." But we believe that we do meet all of the criteria in this instance. The site plan review objectives have to be met. That is dealing with internal circulation and egress from the site such that the traffic safety is protected and access to the roads and is, the dangers are minimized. Reasonable use is made of building location, grading, and vegetation to reduce visibility of parking areas from public ways. Adequate access to each structure for fire and service equipment is provided, and you can see we do have the turning radius up there for the pumper truck. Utilities and drainage serving the site provide functional service, and they do. They have on all these plans, but this one as well. We meet the drainage requirements for the site. The proposed development will minimize adverse environmental impacts, minimize obstruction of scenic views, we will have that, preserve unique natural and historical features, avoid major topographic changes, and minimize removal of existing trees within the required buffer zones. There's a note on the plan, and you can see that we are going to maintain as much of that vegetation as we possibly can all the way around. And what we're taking out, we're going to replace it, as you can see, the green space that's on the plan. The Site Plan Review Committee, as I indicated, Matt, on this project, just looking for that date again, so you have it, June 6th, that was our first stop, I think. And there were some changes made to the plan that we presented at that time to fine-tune it to what you have today. I know there were two, I think there were two order boards, or at least two places with boards. I think you could, there was a request to remove one, which we did. So we have one left, and then the pickup window around the other side of the building. Some side yard encroachments with grading, the fence along the rear of this property dividing the residential property, and this property is going to be installed. We even talked about an acoustic fence, and I'm not sure if it was this board or the Zoning Board of Appeals that suggested that, but that is something that we've looked into, and we're going to be able to provide, not to mention all that vegetation on that boundary. We're really trying to cut the noise down on that side of the property. So I think that the Site Plan Review comments were all abided by. I think they've all been incorporated into the plan that you have now. The next thing you look at are the criteria, standards, and objectives of design review, improving the aesthetic quality of buildings. As you know, this is a balancing, basically, the road bylaw for aesthetic improvements. We relaxed a little bit on some of the zoning. So you have the buildings. They're changed a little bit, but that's, you know, there are obviously two buildings. We've been to design review to look at the aesthetic quality of the buildings, the attractive environmental commercial district, not your typical commercial district buildings, but very attractive and in keeping with the guidelines, at least according to the Design Review Team. So, you know, we, I think we've met all of their requirements. I think their, some of their comments were also incorporated, and I don't think we have any problem with the Design Review Team. The goals and purposes and objectives of this section, which is 411, we also have to obviously meet those. Respect and accomplish the intent and purposes of the Yarmouth Zoning Bylaw. This is a business zone, remember. We're trying to do business in a business zone. We're adding the housing because the housing is there currently. I think it would be worse if we eliminated that altogether. Encourage the development and redevelopment of sites and buildings. Well, this is some, these sites really do need to be revitalized. I mean, if you drive by, you can see. I don't think it's the jewel of the neighborhood, but it's going to be if this is approved. And then it talks about the exchange and the flexibility between the design standards and the relaxation of some of the zoning, which, and that's what this bylaw calls for. The academic benefits of the proposed developments are the same as we've discussed in the past. They're in your package. I submitted them as part of the memorandum in support. But again, this, the upgrade in the property alone is going to increase the tax that would be generated from this site, not to mention some of the different economic benefits for jobs. So, you know, and again, obviously, the economic benefits are increased, beautiful places to live versus those cottages that are there now. Recommendations of the Site Plan Review Team and the Community and Economic Development Committee, both have been secured. You have, I believe you have copies of both of those. And then some of the supplementary road district standards, which talk about the architectural styles. And again, the Design Review has been through this. You are acting as the Design Review Committee today, and I believe you can tell from the architecture that we, I believe, we meet all of the requirements of the recommendations of the Design Review. So I believe we've met all of those criteria. What it boils down to is the Planning Board needs to approve the road district development plan. You're not voting to allow this to happen. Obviously, we had our Obviously, we had, our next stop would be the zoning board of appeals. So we're just asking for the approval that we meet these criteria. What we would be asking the zoning board of appeals for are some relaxation of some of the requirements, turning some variances into special permits. So basically, what we would be talking about is this. The buildings are sitting in the front setback, typically not permissible. Under the road bylaw, it's actually desirable. It's part of the citing requirements in the guidelines. So we've moved those up to give that more historic feeling of being right near the road. We have some parking in the front setback. It's not in front of the building. It's all, all the parking is either to the side or the rear of the building, of the buildings. However, any parking space that's within the front setback of 30 feet needs relief, and that's where we'd be asking for that. I believe we have two in-lot trees that they've counted. I believe there might be actually more with that island separating the residential building from the gas station. I guess it's something that you'd have to look at, but we would be looking for that if need be. The drive-through buffer distance to the residential zone of 100 feet. Well, again, the queuing line, as drawn on the plan, is within the 100 feet of residential properties. There's no question. It's a question of when the drive-through buffer begins. We do have some distances from the order board, which are over 100 feet away from the property and even further away from the actual structure that's on that property. But we understand what the bylaw says. It says to the residential lot. So the queuing line could be within 100 feet of that. The front landscape buffer is a little tight because we have moved that building so close to the road. We have an A12 multifamily use in the B2 zoning district. The H6 use, which is the gas station use in the B2 zoning district. But again, both of those are currently there and being operated as such. And then the signs on the front and the side elevation of the building, because we turned the building to the side. So you'd have one going by and then one facing the gas pumps. I believe we meet all the goals and purposes. I think we've bettered this property with this plan. There was a lot of concern about the housing being on top of the store. And again, the safety of coming and going with the residents of the units. I think by moving it into their separate building and basically segregating it, it sort of works a lot better and provides additional parking. It's very delineated as well for the parking for that, for those residential units, which is a lot better than where they were. We do have some employees parking where that used to be up in the far west side, up near the top there. So that's basically the change we've made. We feel we meet all the criteria. If we have any questions, we're happy to hopefully answer those for you.
Thank you. Kathy, you want to run through your planner memo for us now?
Sure. I think a lot of the information has already been summarized by Attorney Tardif. I would just note that they did make a lot of changes from the site plan review comments, as he did note, and I've listed them in here, and there's quite a few. But the one that was a question mark has to do with the eight-foot privacy fence behind. I know that there had been some discussion of it being an acoustic fence when we went to the design review committee, but later comments with Hal Chuba made it sound like you were not going to be having it be any type of acoustic fence. It would just be an eight-foot tall solid fence.
It is an acoustical fence because the...
It is or is not?
It is, because the rating on the fence is STC 26 minimum. STC 26 is the sound transmittive coefficient of 26 is acoustical. So we will provide acoustical fence.
So perhaps you could go over that letter that you had with regard to the acoustics, and so that people might get a better understanding of the decibel levels that they might be experiencing at the property line?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening again, for the record, Hal Chuba, consulting engineer. And I did submit the letter to Ms. Williams on the decibels. And I specified the intercom systems that we'll be using with the Dunkin' Donuts, with the decibel readings. And I did, I provided some computations, and we computed that the decibel levels at the property line, because as you know, when you travel, every time you double the distance from the source of the sound, the decibel drops by six. So I did submit the computations, and we anticipate that the decibel levels at the property line would be at 52 decibels. And taken into consideration, the property line, which is 50 feet from the menu board, not the actual residence, which is 190 feet. At the property line, to the north of the menu board, the decibel level would be around 52 decibels without any mitigation. Now adding the STC 26, eight-foot-high fence with the abreviate is that we propose, we anticipate to reduce that level by eight to 10 decibels, bringing the level to 44 to 42, which is equal, which is lower than normal conversation level. And I'm sure if the town has zoning bylaws that limits the decibel levels at the property line, we would be happy that you add that condition, that we cannot exceed the level at the property line. And this is normal practice in every town. They do have instruments that either we can do third-party, or most towns, the zoning officials or the zoning enforcing officer will have that instrument, and they can go and measure the decibels.
The town of Yarmouth does not have a standard with regard to decibel levels. I didn't realize that the fence that you were proposing originally for design review, you had talked about having some type of rigid insulation in addition to. Did you change the style?
I did, because Kathy, what I did, the original one wasn't, was just a regular PVC, that we would attach two-inch of rigid insulation. We've done that in other projects. I do a lot, I design a lot of car washes, and you know, car washes produce sounds level that much higher than the, and we do that, and it helps a lot. But I thought from aesthetic, it's not going to look good to attach two-inch rigid insulation on the inside face of the fence. So I went to the STC, minimum STC 26, which is acoustical fence.
Okay.
And I think it'll be neater and for both the property, the residents on the other side and my client.
I'm afraid I misunderstood. I thought that you were just using a standard fencing. I didn't realize that the type of fencing that you were proposing provides some decibel reduction.
With the STC, minimum STC 26, that's what we specified on the plans.
So maybe that's a condition you would like to have included, is that the eight-foot fence, you know, have a minimum STC 26 rating?
SP 26?
ST.
ST?
Sound transmission.
We have some experts.
And I think maybe if you could just show the difference for the planning board in the dormer. One of the comments from the design review, they were actually very pleased with this revised submission. They thought it was a superior product than what had been submitted before. Are you trying to open up your...
You might see it, Kathy, you might say both left...
Left comparison?
Left elevation, one of the files says, oh yeah, right there, comparison. Great, thank you. So basically, the one on the right is the one we submitted during the design review committee, and I think it was Sarah Porter, was it Sarah?
Correct, yeah.
Felt that the dormer was kind of large for the structure, and she suggested that maybe we can reduce the size. So we did reduce the size, and this is the size. And again, we have no intention to use the second floor. The intention was to create the illusion that this was a two-story building because it sits better with the design and the community. So, but we have, we can use it for either storage or personal office use. We, I said maybe 600, not to exceed 600 square feet. And all we have to do, Kathy, is show the stairs going from this first floor to the second floor, if this is the case.
I think the only thing that the planning board would be looking at is what the exterior looks like, and you're not asking for any relief for that use because it's allowed, it's an allowed use. So what Hal was saying is this is the elevation on the side with the dormer. They want the dormers to break up the roof so you don't have a large expanse of just plain roof. And Sarah Porter, during the design review committee, she's a member, commented that maybe it could be made smaller. So this was the original submittal, and then this is what they submitted, and you have a copy of it today. I think it's up to the board whether you have a preference to them?
We don't have any preference. I mean, whatever the preference of the board is fine with us.
I think that's really all of the report. We did receive one written comment from Audrey Pitts in objection to the project. Is Audrey here? Your letter has been distributed to all the planning board members. I'm assuming that you may be wishing to speak this evening, or do you want me to? Okay. Okay, so Audrey would like, Audrey would like to have her letter stand instead of giving an oral testimony today. She did submit a letter noting that she is a home sitter and registered voter in the town of Yarmouth, and really feeling that, known by their very nature, this project is not qualified for consideration as a road project. She notes that the town of Yarmouth wished to encourage the construction of buildings with comported architectural, with a traditional seaside, with pedestrian and bicycle walking areas. And the town therefore offers landowners and developers willing to adhere to this vision certain relaxations and streamlining of the zoning through the road process. She further notes that a generic gas station, convenience store, drive-through embodies pretty much the opposite of this vision. Her second comment was related to the economic benefits and contention that a road application does not have to fulfill all the requirements. If it benefits to the town are great enough, has focused on the alleged monetary benefits, but these appear to be exaggerated or illusory, as in many cases, not seriously analyzed. For example, both the gas station and the convenience store replicate two or three other gas stations and convenience stores already in the same area. Will the proposal's business simply cut into the patronage of the existing concerns rather than adding new clients, basically being a tattamount to a wash? Similarly, the claim that these businesses will add employees in a situation where virtually every other business in town has trouble recruiting anyone to work there, needs to be taken with a large grain of salt. Would they perhaps be purloined from other establishments in a town? Again, simply moving pieces around the board without adding anything. There's a third comment noting that an additional factor definitely disqualifying this particular proposal from consideration as a road project is stipulated in the Yarmouth zoning bylaw, where one of the sections, Section 411.3.1, footnote 9, states that the special permit may be issued, quote, "provided such use is not hazardous by reasons of potential fire, explosion, radiation, nor injurious or detrimental to the neighborhood by reason of dust, odor, fumes, vibration, or other noxious objectionable features, nor harmful to surface or groundwater," unquote. She notes the inherent hazardous nature of gas stations related to carcinogenic substances and the different scientific studies that have been done. And she would urge the planning board members to take these potential hazards seriously, especially in view of the proximity of the proposed project to residences. This is even more critical, given that the owners of the gas station have been cited. She notes that they've been cited several times for gas bills and have been remiss in necessary remediation or cleanup. Another dire consideration on the site revolving around the current cottage residence concerning infestations of rats inside one of the residences. Despite, one can only conclude, some lackadaisical attempts by the town of Yarmouth's public health to get the owners to address the issue. No action was taken for over five years until another outside agency got involved on behalf of the residents. The owners have demonstrated disregard for hazardous conditions on their property, and a notable failure to address them, which continues for years. Next comment is, similar to carelessness in regard to hazardous materials is evident in the current proposed acoustical fence of the rear lot. It is designed as a vinyl fence with two-inch rigid insulation attached and painted white. This is the type of insulation that is used in buildings and then covered up with something substantial like wood siding, so that it's never exposed to the elements, where it will quickly enough disintegrate. I think we have responded to that. They changed the type of fencing that they're using. Other questionable items include trees too close to the septic system and the septic tanks, and leaching fields located under traffic and idling lanes for gas, the store, and the drive-through, as well as access to the apartment parking area. Through placing septic systems under tarmac may reasonably, in some circumstances, the heavy traffic one might expect from three businesses and one residence makes such placement there here rather dubious. Certainly is likely due to trying to squeeze too much into the available space. And the next comment is the car-centric nature of this project, and in particular, the drive-through will cause more, almost constant traffic from very early in the morning well into the night. The current situation where our neighborhood is buffered from the gas station by the cottages will be transformed into one where cars will be moving and idling close to the rear lot line, in fact, closer than the standard required distance. This will introduce noxious fumes, including diesel, as well as noise levels that we simply have not experienced here before. And due to the proposed hours of operation and the need to service the various businesses before, during, and after normal operations, we will have no respite from these new obnoxious conditions. Next comment is, I understand that the current owners wish to improve the property and increase its profitability, and that some members of the town government consider this site to currently be an eyesore and would like to see something, anything really, to replace it. But these desires are not sufficient to make this conglomeration of carcinogenic, I'm sorry, excuse me, car-centric businesses a road project. Nothing prevents the owner from taking advantage of the normal zoning process to change the lot. She urges that the board to disqualify this application as a road project.
That was the only written comment, right?
That was the only written comment received.
Correct. Initial questions from planning board members. Anyone? We're going to do public comments next, yeah. Initial questions from the planning board.
Madam Chair, I just have a couple of questions I just want to get some clarification on. The drive-through operation, do you have a rough idea of the hours of that operation right now, based on what your plans are for it?
I think this is best for Jane. I'm not sure.
What did we say last time, was it 6:00 AM to 8?
8:00 PM, yeah, 6 to 8.
6 to 8, I think is what we said.
6 to 8.
6 to 8.
So 6:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night?
8:00 PM.
The ST26 fencing that you're planning running on the, I guess it would be the north side of the property, are you planning on carrying that down the east side behind the apartments as well, or just rigid fencing on that east side? What's your plan there?
Rigid fencing on...
On the east side?
Will it look the same as the fencing on the north side?
It would look the same. It, I believe, will be six feet, not eight feet, high. Separating business on the other side.
Mr. Saban? I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. With regards to the proposed residential building, did I understand from Mr. Tardif's statement that the front doors of this building will be facing to the east, and that the gable end would be facing 28? Or was I misunderstanding that?
Did you hear that? He was basically asking about where is the front, basically the front doors? Is it facing Route 28 or facing the parking area?
Facing the parking lot, but you need to have two means of egress for each unit. So that's why we have egress from every side of the four sides of the units. But the main entrances would be from the parking lot in the back.
So facing north.
The way I'm looking at it... Jim, if I can help you out, I'm looking at the plans now, and as you're looking at it from Route 28, you're looking at the gable.
Right, look at this.
Well, the main gable, there are some small...
If you look, if you can, if we can show the plans that are being shown? Yeah, you can, that's, are you talking about the residential, or are you talking about the...
The residential, yes, the residential.
Residential, Karen.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about...
Is the Route 28, the view from Route 28.
So the view from 28 would be the two, that would, would you point to that?
The top one, Jim, is the one facing 28.
Okay, that's, okay. That worked, okay. That was my initial question, I may have more, but thank you.
As you mentioned, the main entrance is in the rear where the parking is located for the tenants.
But you do need two means of egress for every residential unit. That's why we have those all along.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I just want to talk about the, ask a question about the fence on the north side. And you mentioned arborvitae's will also be planted along the fence. Can you talk a little bit about the landscaping buffer in addition to the fence?
Correct. I think Kathy, if I need to bother you on this one, I think I do have a section of the, of, yeah, let me see if I can see if I'm here. Fence detail. Okay, yeah. So the elevation of the fence, obviously it shows the height of the fence, that's an eight-foot fence. But if you look at the section of the fence, to the left side is the residential property and you'll have the fence, the eight-foot fence. To the right of that would be to the, to the north. And then in between you'll have another 20-foot of buffer, of vegetated buffer, which is a combination of large trees and arborvitae's. But the arborvitae's, if you look at the landscape plan, I believe we have.
Page seven.
Page seven. And we do have 74 arborvitae's. At the time of planting, the arborvitae will be three-inch caliper and they'll be spaced, I believe, five feet on center if I'm not mistaken.
That sounds awfully close.
But that's, that's the intention. I think we wanted to create like, like, like a buffer.
And, and does that extend to the entire length of the northern boundary?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And it loops on another 20 feet on the east, on the east side.
I did want to ask about the east side as well.
East side, we have large trees, combination where, we are keeping, saving all the existing vegetation there. And on top of that, to the west of the existing vegetation will be, will be planting large trees and arborvitae's. They're shown on the plans.
Yes. Ms. Britta.
Do you have an in-ground sprinkler system?
Yes, we do.
Who operates that? Who controls that?
Who controls the system?
I know it's automated, but who will control it to make sure that?
My assumption is the tenant, whoever's there.
Tenant. Which one, you mean in the, in the apartment buildings or in the?
No, the, the, the convenience, the owner, but it'll be through the tenant. If it's an owner occupied, it will be the tenant if it's not.
Well, what about, who's going to, who's going to water the ones along the fence? Is that going to be Dunkin' Donuts responsible?
No, it's, it's automatic. It's, it's programmed.
I know it's programmed, but I mean, if it breaks, if it's in the middle of winter?
Right. I mean, that's, that's normal maintenance. They'll have to contact the owner and same as if somebody plows and they break the fence. So the owner will be, will be responsible for the maintenance.
Speaking of the owner, will the owner of, of this now combined lot be one entity?
Uh.
Or at some point down the road, are you looking to have separate owners of the convenience, of the gas, of the residential?
No, I don't, I don't think we can do that by, by joining the lots together. I think we need one owner.
Yeah.
That would probably, and this plan would probably do it. Yeah, because there, it's, it's.
But you, you may have, you obviously will have multiple tenants.
Correct. Right.
And I guess part of Susan's question is whether it's the tenant's responsibility to make sure that the landscaping doesn't go kaput or the owner. And you've, you've, you've said that it would be the owner that's responsible. Any other questions from the board? Before we, before we take, before we take a vote on this, I'd like to get the sentiments of, of the board after we hear from the public, before we take a public, before we take an official vote. So I'd like you to think about your, your thoughts about yea or nay after we hear from the public and, and provide an opportunity to the petitioners to understand where we all sit on the matter before we take a formal vote. Is that agreeable to you, Mr. Tardif?
Thank you.
Mr., okay, great. So, members of the public, who would like to speak? Who would like to speak first? Remember name and address? Thank you.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Attorney David Reed and I represent Scott and Nancy Rayburn of 28 Briar Lane, which is the property immediately behind this property. That home has been in Nancy Rayburn's family since back in the 50s. She tells me that she grew up there, obviously quite a bit later than the 50s. But she went to DY High School while she was living there and this has been her family's home all along. She covered her lives in sandwich but intended to return to this home as her retirement home and still hopes to be able to do that. So she has a very deep and sincere interest in the outcome of these hearings. I know you've heard from us before. I don't think Mr. Smith was on the previous hearing, but.
I was, Mr. Reed. I was on the last hearing.
So I'll, along with Mr. Tardif's comments, I'll try not to be too repetitious, but this is a new hearing and it is a new matter and I have some hope of a new vote from you. I hope to change some of your minds and perhaps reach a different conclusion than you did last time. As Mr. Tardif indicated, the road bylaw is a two-step process. You're not being asked tonight to approve ultimately this development, but to clear it to go to the Board of Appeals who will review the particular relief that they need and the legal standards for a special permit as opposed to either special permits or variances as might otherwise be needed. Quite a bit of a, of a step up for the applicant, a huge step up in this case for the applicant to be able to only need one special permit from the Board of Appeals rather than six or seven different special permits and/or variances under the underlying zoning bylaw. So it is a very significant step for you to pass it through to that level of review. As you know, and as, as the road bylaw indicates, the objectives are, from the architectural element, to preserve and enhance the community's innate charm and character and to have an architectural style which promotes the historic seaside village, colonial, and/or old Cape Cod style themes of architecture and development. I'm not suggesting to you that this is an unattractive building, nor am I suggesting that it's not more attractive than what's there now. But I ask you, when you look at the design of that building, what about it says old Cape Cod to you? Because that's the standard. That's the threshold for the architectural element of the review. I suggest that while it is an attractive building, it's not something that screams old Cape Cod or seaside village or seaside village streetscape, which is what the road bylaw is all about and which what, and which your hand-drafted from the planning board, not you personally, but the planning board's own creation of site and architectural design standards mandates for this kind of a development as a threshold requirement. Beyond the style, there's also the element of function. The road bylaw is all about promoting pedestrian-friendly village streetscape settings. The number one goal in terms of the, the recitations within your standards for site standards is that it promote, it contribute to a village streetscape, that it promote pedestrian-oriented village center styles and that it have pedestrian-scale amenities. I don't think this does. But let me back up just one step and ask, how did we get to this road bylaw? You may recall, as I do, that quite a few years ago, the town of Yarmouth was getting rather frustrated with the development of Route 28 not proceeding as we had hoped it would. And so they commissioned a company of experts to study the business district and tell us what was wrong and what we could do better. And the one thing they came back with was that the big thing missing in Yarmouth is that we didn't have a town center. There was no center of town, there was no central business district. We had Route 28 sprawling from one end to the other without any distinctive, any distinctive features. It was described by them as a place to pass through rather than a place to stop, rather than a destination. So since we can't create out of whole cloth a town center where one doesn't exist, the planning board, some of you and your predecessors, decided to focus on the smaller village centers that we do have and to promote them as less specific but still central locations where our village identity, our town identity could be promoted and encouraged. So with that in mind, we, we came up with the, among other things, the road bylaw where we will encourage development within the older existing village settings. And in order to do that, compromise on the otherwise zoning requirements that promote sprawl and spreading out of businesses rather than concentration where people can stop and enjoy a center, an area, rather than just passing by on their way to someplace else. So with that in mind, I ask the question, as did the lady who wrote the letter to you, how does a self-serve gas station, a grab-and-go convenience store, and a drive-through coffee shop promote that kind of a village setting? How does that encourage anyone to stop and get out of their car and enjoy a village area, which is what these, this is supposed to do? In fact, it's the exact opposite. This kind of business location is designed to promote people who don't want to stop, who want to get in their car, maybe not even shut the car off, get their coffee, get their gas, grab their lottery tickets and, or cigarettes from the convenience store and get on their way to someplace else. It does not promote pedestrian-oriented business in any fashion whatsoever. This is not as if it's a coffee shop where you stop and sit down and have a cup of coffee and socialize and, and play with the wifi or whatever you do in, in some of the other coffee shops in, in perhaps more urban settings. Nobody's going to stop and have their coffee here. If they do, it's an aberration. It's not what this is designed for. It's designed to grab what you, you're going to get and go. The same thing with the convenience store. This is not ye olde village store. This is a store of, of glass and chrome that is designed to have people who are getting their gas to be able to run in and grab a sandwich or, or cold drink or whatever and get on their way. Obviously, a self-serve gas station does nothing to promote pedestrian access. It's not for pedestrians. It's for cars that are on their way someplace else. This is simply not something that promotes a village setting. And let's look at a couple of your specific requirements in your standards again. Some of the, the recommendations from the Design Review Committee are a bit baffling to me. I'd like to focus on just a couple. As I said, number one on the goals and site standards in, in your standards, not in the bylaw, is that it contribute to a village streetscape setting. The phrases used in your number one criteria are that it promote a traditional village design, that it have pedestrian-scale amenities, that it have small parks, plazas, and gathering sites. Where are any of those on this property? How can you possibly find that it meets that standard? One of the others of interest to me, and if I might ask that sheet four be brought up on the, on the screen for a minute, sheet four of 17. One of your standards, it's number 11 in your book, is that the site is to be designed to shield the loading and delivery areas from public view. It uses the phrase that they be, quote, "outside the primary visual corridors of the site." So on this, before you hear, sheet number four of 17, where is the loading area for the gas tank truck? The 60-foot-long gas tank truck that's going to come and periodically fill up those tanks? It's located in that grayed area right in front of the first bank of pumps, some 20 or 25 feet from Route 28 and about halfway between the residences and the convenience store. How is that outside of the visual corridor for the rest of the site or for that matter from Route 28? And where is the loading area for the other two businesses, for the store and for the restaurant? What's even in front of that? It's the hatched area forward of where the tank truck is going to park, hopefully not the same day because that's going to be a real mess if they are. How is that shielded from public view or shielded from the primary visual corridors? This design simply does not promote what is intended to do in order to get the benefit of this bylaw. One of the other criteria for you is to decide whether what's proposed is consistent with the underlying zoning requirements or the extent to which it deviates from those underlying requirements. Now granted, you're not being asked tonight to grant that actual relief, but you are required under your standards to review the extent of the deviation from the underlying zoning and to assess that in terms of whether or not that can be overridden by the benefits of a road district approval. One of the most important deviations in our point of view, from my client's perspective, is the drive-through. Section 301.8 of the zoning bylaw, the B2 zoning regulations, requires that all components of a drive-through facility be located at least 100 feet from a residential property, not from a house, but from a residential property or district line. I would suggest to you that that bylaw is intended exactly to cover this situation because that's the only thing it applies to. It applies where residential properties are directly abutting a commercial zone where a drive-through is proposed. That's the only situation where it comes into effect, not if it's commercial next to commercial, but residential next to commercial. And yet this is proposed to be less than half what it's required to be. The queuing area or the staging area for, for cars are going to be about 34 feet away from my client's property, one-third of what's required. The ordering station, the menu board, the bright, lighted and, and vocal menu board is 48.7 feet from my client's property. They're supposed to both be 100. It's nice that the engineer was able to measure the decibels that come from the speaker, but that's not the only reason we have this bylaw. There's also the noise generated by the people in the cars. There's the noise generated by the cars and trucks themselves. There's the issue of fumes from cars and trucks that are queuing up and waiting for their chance to order. And there's from the general, and there is the problem of the general proximity of those stacked cars to residential zones. And Yarmouth has chosen not to regulate those by terms of decibel levels, as Ms. Williams indicated, there's no such bylaw in Yarmouth. Yarmouth chose, when they got around to regulating drive-throughs, to set the standard at distance, distance from residential lots, 100 feet. There's no other criteria in there for that. It's just the distance. Why then do these neighbors, who are the exact beneficiaries of this bylaw, being asked to accept half or less than half of what the bylaw says they're entitled to protection? And we all know, and we've heard time and time again, when residences show up at your meetings or at the Board of Appeals and complain about nearby commercial development, that the standard retort is to say, well, you know, you bought your house next to a commercial district, you got to expect there's going to be commercial activities. I think Mr. Tardif said that already once tonight. But the flip side of that coin is this. If we're expected, my clients are expected, to foresee that businesses will come to the rest, to the business property, then aren't they also entitled to expect that those businesses will comply with the regulations that control them in their district? And one of those is that the drive-through be 100 feet away from them. So if we're looking at expectations and what my clients are entitled to expect, are entitled to, to ask for and expect you to enforce, aren't they entitled to expect that 100 feet of separation? And why would you encourage the applicant to develop this property in a way that deliberately includes less than half of what that bylaw requires? How is that remotely consistent with the underlying zoning bylaw, particularly where, as I said at the beginning, in our opinion, the type of business does nothing to promote the road bylaws purposes? Another part of your evaluation is whether the overall project has a net benefit. Is it nevertheless good for the community, not for the applicant, but beneficial for the community over any detrimental impacts? From my client's point of view, the answer to that is no. There are currently on the site two gas pumps located. There are currently on the site two gas pumps located 110 feet away from my client's property. They propose four of them now, double the number, under a twenty-and-a-half-foot canopy. They'll be located 47.2 feet from my client's property, half the distance that currently exists. The building's going to be more than twice as tall as what's there now, and the drive-through that they're proposing does not exist now. That's entirely new encroachment into my client's considerations. Yes, they propose an eight-foot fence along our property line. But let me ask you to look not just at a two-dimensional plan, but think about the actual benefit of that fence. What good is an eight-foot fence when you're looking at a 21-foot-tall canopy or a 31-foot-tall building located only about 50 feet from their property? Eight-foot fence, 21-foot-tall canopy, 31-foot-tall building. Eight-foot fence sounds nice if you're talking about a ground-level business, but that's not what we've got here. This is going to be a huge impact upon these neighboring properties visually, aesthetically, and in terms of their comfort and enjoyment of their own properties. So I ask you again, I sort of come full circle. Does this self-serve gas station, drive-through coffee shop, and what I call a grab-and-go convenience store do anything to promote the purposes of the road bylaw? Does it do anything to facilitate a pedestrian-oriented streetscape? I hope you'll find that the answer is no, and you will not pass this through to the Board of Appeals or encourage this kind of development where it ought not be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Anyone else from the public?
This is Mr. David, he's our lawyer, and I agree with everything he said, obviously. This is the third time we've been here, and all of our arguments are exactly the same as they were before. Nothing has changed. None of his changes that he's brought up have changed any of our feelings about how this project is going forward and that it shouldn't. I just want to reiterate, it should not go forward. It's not a road. It doesn't fit. I've got a lot of other things that if we have goes to zoning, that I've got a list this long of things that it doesn't meet, but I'm going to leave that for zoning if you ever do let this go through.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Shelley Morrison. I live behind J-Mart myself. I just want to say I totally agree with what the lawyer was saying too. And I'd be okay if it's just the drive-through. I don't, I think that's, we don't need that right there in that area. Not only that, when you're coming over the bridge from Dennis, there's always traffic there. So now you're going to get through the bridge and still be in traffic because it's going to create more right there. And that's all I have to say for now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to speak to...
Your name, sir, and your address, please.
Dominic Antonellis, 16 Fairwind Circle, South Yarmouth. I've been a resident of Yarmouth for 44 years, and Mr. Aman and his family are neighbors of ours, and I want to speak to his character and his business acumen. He's a good businessman. He's a great neighbor. He's always willing to help some of the elderly and some of the things he's done. He has worked with Dennis. He's had businesses in Dennis. He's had businesses in Wareham. He says businesses here in Yarmouth, and he conducts a very good business, so I want to speak to that and to his plan. I'm not speaking to that at this point. I want to make sure that you understand, though, that he is a good businessman, and what he's proposing is something that probably makes that area of Yarmouth and Route 28 a good-looking site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, my name is Gene Green. I'm at 31 Coldview Drive. I'm also a neighbor of Mr. Yarmouth, and I would also, you know, first of all, preface my remarks with the respect that I have for the board and the way town government works. I've been a town meeting member for a long, long time, off Cape, and school committee member for nine years, so I applaud your efforts and your deliberations and deep respect for how town government works. That being, you know, my prefacing remark, it also echo Mr. Antonellis's comments about Mr. Aman's, you know, character, the way he does business, and more so to the point. I think, you know, the presentation, and certainly it's no secret, Route 28 needs a lot of work visually and the economic impacts of it. I would be in favor of anything that helps to improve what Route 28 looks like. But I just want to, you know, give my support to the way the project's been going. It's only one step in a process that goes to the ZBA now, so that's a different conversation. But right now, it appears as though it's a viable plan that helps the looks and the visual feel of 28 and an economic impact to the town that just, you know, goes without saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I see a hand raised on the screen there?
You do. Sheila has her hand raised.
Yes, Sheila. Sheila, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Your name and address, please.
Sheila Furrow, 11 Nahhot Road, South Yarmouth, Mass.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch any of that.
She repeated that.
Sheila, can you repeat your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry. Sheila Furrow, 11 Nahhot Road, South Yarmouth, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments?
Well, I can look out my window upstairs and see the property, and there's already a lot of noise coming from the property, perhaps because of the tenants, but also because of the gas station that's currently there and the convenience store. And I just wondered who will be, if this project is approved and completed, who would be inspecting or watching over this project to be sure that all of the bylaws are continually And my other concern, and it may, what, I'm sorry?
Well, I'll defer to Kathy, but I believe the building inspector has responsibilities, the building commissioner?
Well, they're not going to be monitoring it. You know, during construction and prior to an issuance of a certificate of occupancy, they will make sure that they have done everything that they need to do in compliance with any permits that they have been issued, the special permit conditions, any conditions that the board might do. But during, you know, actual operations in the years in the future, typically what happens is if there's an issue, we get notified through a neighbor or some of butter is concerned with something or somebody identifies it and brings it to our attention. And that's something that then enforcement is done through the building department.
Okay. Thank you. Now, the other question I have, and perhaps I just haven't read enough, but what about the sewer system? Will it be upgraded? And how will, I mean, we already have a problem with our wastewater management. What's going to happen with this property when it gets torn down and built back up again?
Well, the plan for Phase One for the town of Yarmouth is to bring the pipes, so to speak, down Route 28. That would be from Parker's River to the Bass River Bridge. So that's Phase One. So yes, there will be an opportunity for a sewer hookup sometime in the future.
Okay. All right. Well, I must say I vote nay for the project, but thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Sheila. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to get, again, as I indicated, is Mr. Saban still with us?
Yes. Yeah. There he is.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. I thought I had lost you there. So as I had indicated, I'd like to get some sense of board members as to their initial inclinations with regard to this project so that we can give the petitioner a sense of where we might, we might be coming out. Who would like to start?
Madam Chair, I'll start.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You know, I think from my first meeting and the first, it was my first day on the board till now, there's been some significant design changes to the property. But, you know, as Attorney Reed had commented, you know, about design, look, old Cape Cod, really, very candidly, I'm not sure what old Cape Cod or Route 28 is anymore. I certainly think that, you know, the design of what they have now compared to what I saw the first night I was here is significantly different. I still do have some concerns, though. One of the things that, you know, there's a couple of things that was mentioned by Attorney Reed on distant measurements that conflict from what Mr. Tatter said. I'm not sure where the two discrepancies in measurements are, but the bottom line is this. It's my one concern I have with the whole project is the drive-through section of this project. The queuing up within, you know, yes, we're having a soundproof fence put up, but the point made is a very valid point about cars queuing up. You can't control the noise that's going on in somebody's car and somebody's radio, all that. There is a distance issue there. And, you know, as it was stated, there is a reason why 100-foot buffer was set for drive-throughs. So I think the project certainly, from a viability standpoint and from a look standpoint, is vastly improved from where it was. I have a concern with the drive-through.
Sure. Susan, I'm Spurda.
I'm sort of looking at this from the point of what we're supposed to do as members of the planning board and as stewards of the road program, the road application, the road, you know, what the road overlay bylaws were supposed to do. We have our standards. We worked on them, and we had, we certainly had clear cut calls, although some of it is, what does Cape Cod look like today? We certainly know it doesn't look like Route 28. We all look at 28 and say, "Oh, my God, we've got to do something," and then we try to figure out what the something is. So in general, I just don't think it meets the mark. It misses the mark. Cape Cod shingles and white trim and gables, you can see that on Route 9 in Natick. I just don't think, and I quite frankly think the town would be better served by seeing this go through the regular process, by seeing this go through the borders of zoning appeals and, because you've got eight areas that you're looking for relief. Some of them, as Fred pointed out, are very significant. I think your project would benefit, and I certainly think the town would benefit, if we tried to move forward this, that you do it under regular order as opposed to the road, the road application. It's almost like we have a team dressed up to play soccer, and you're wearing your uniforms to get on the field, but the rules and the regulations say you're going to play football, and you're not in the football league. You're still playing soccer. I just don't think it meets, I've always been concerned that, I'm very conscious of aesthetics, and I'm very conscious that Jim Saban has always said, you know, he's sick of people driving through, Yarmouth being viewed as honky-tonk. This does not meet, in my mind, the goals of what the road program was supposed to do. I think you'd be better off, quite frankly, if you wanted to move forward with it, you take your chances in front of the border zoning appeals. There are some significant deviations. One is the drive-through. The road, we're supposed to be promoting, and we're not. We're deviating, and the residents, quite frankly, are the ones paying the price. They will not benefit from this, and that's the way I feel. Right now, I would vote no for it. I'm not supportive. I mean, design is great, and it is a long way from where you were before, but it is not, does not fit the criteria or the outline of what the, what the road application was intended to do. You've got a lot of good stuff, and I think you ought to go in front of zoning and, you know, swing for the fence. I just don't think it's, I don't think you're there with road. You're just, too many deviations, and the drive-through is huge. That is not a Cape Cod village idea, so. And as I said, the residents pay the price. They have been very consistent in their objections. You've done a long, you've gone a long way to improve the design, but like I said, it's almost like you're, like you're dressed to play lacrosse when the game is really football. That's it. Chris, I know Chris is not going to agree with me because that's where I sit next to me.
I play neither lacrosse nor football. I prefer hockey.
Okay. Just for hockey, but they're playing...
Yeah, I think it's not an easy place to be, sitting up here on the board, because our job is to hear both sides of the story and then, and then make a decision, and we never please everybody, and we don't expect to, I hope. The one word that should be hanging on the back of this, right next to that seal of Yarmouth, would be the word compromise, because that's what this is all about. That said, after listening to this, I've heard some generalities and some specifics. The generalities are, it's not a Cape Cod design. Well, it's not a wigwam. It's not a thatched roof house up in Plymouth Colony. So that's a very vague description. I wish it wouldn't be used. What is Cape Cod architecture? As far as it being pedestrian-friendly, I see from the site plan that the buffer is greatly improved with vegetation and sidewalks and having residential units there that people will be able to walk to. There's a park down the street they can walk to. So I think the pedestrian access of this has definitely improved. How about the fence? How about the drive-through? So that's the sticking point that it comes down to. I think everything else is just mirror dressing for what's going on here. And again, I point to the word compromise. So it's true, 100-foot distance required between a drive-through and a property line. I was not a member of the board, I don't believe, when that was, came into existence. So that was, that was pre-me. If that had been me on the board, I would have said, "Why is the arbitrary number 100 chosen for this? Why not a decibel reading? Makes perfect sense." That being the case, that's, it's not in the, it's not in the bylaw. It is 100 foot. It's not a decibel rating. But again, I'll bring you back to that word compromise. Are the applicants doing what they can to make this a better site? And I say that they absolutely are. I challenge anybody to go outside right now and draw me a correct 100-foot distance. I would also challenge anybody to speak in a, in a voice and tell me what decibel reading it is. I can't do it, and I'm pretty sure none of you can do it as well. So the intent, it seems to me, of the applicants is to mitigate these problems. And I think they've done a great job at it. No application on Route 28 comes without problems, because that was developed long before the zoning was in place. So almost every project that comes before us is seeking some kind of relief. It's just the way that it is, because Route 28 has been there for so long. And that's the job of this Board, is to use our discretion, to use our intelligence, look at the facts, and then make a decision based on that. So my feeling is they are doing what they can within the realms of possibilities, and they're trying to be good neighbors. And I would applaud them for that. And I think I'll close with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Saban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. First of all, I'd like to compliment the applicant for putting so many items on each page that I'm sure that they were not charged by the paper, but by the word, because there's a million words on each of these, and some of it's a little difficult to read. So congratulations for loading these plans up with stuff. That being said, a couple of things. I was involved with the original, sadly, I'm getting that old, the original road bylaw. I was on the Planning Board when it was first created. And the only use of the road bylaw to this date that I'm aware of is the Shields Building at Baker's Square at the Barnstable-Yarmouth Line. That neighborhood doesn't have a promotion to walking distance and meeting the village criteria, but it did build a building that conformed, to the most part, to our Design Review standards, which we have written and I think Kathy can make available. At our last hearing, I commented about what looks like Cape Cod and what doesn't. And, you know, and Ms. Britta is right. I'm quite upset by the term honky-tonk, but that our town looks like. But in reality, I'm not thrilled about the fact that they're going to build a huge water slide right on 28 after what they've already done. So much for my ideas of keeping Yarmouth's Route 28 from being honky-tonk. That's probably as big a honky-tonk as we can get. So with that thought process and looking at design, I really have a hard time telling somebody that their building doesn't meet our Architectural Design Review standards when we're building a 10-million-square-foot water park right down the road. So I compliment them on the fact that they've done a lot to change the aesthetics of this project. Clearly, if they were to complete this, 100% better aesthetically than what's existing there today. However, that all being said, I too am deeply concerned about the drive-through. It's not just the noise. I appreciate that they moved the speaker, and I'd actually thought the other night, well, maybe they could move it the other way, but then we'd all have to get cars from England so that we could hear the speaker. And that's not going to work either. So the second thing I looked at was, when you apply this thought process elsewhere in our community, what do we get? So I looked at the Dunkin' Donuts in West Yarmouth, down by Higgins Call Road. They have a pretty long drive-through as well. However, in the summer, you'll see cars out onto Route 28 backed up onto that drive-through. That's not what we want. I don't think any of us want to see cars backed up onto Route 28, either in West Yarmouth or South Yarmouth or Yarmouth Port or anywhere else, because we have a drive-through. That's my biggest sticking point. I'm in favor of everything else. I appreciate everything that they've done with regards to buffering noise, but those cars are not going to just emit noise, but they'll admit gas fumes and diesel fuel fumes. And having pulled up to a couple of stop signs in the last eight weeks of driving, I've heard an awful lot of people with music blaring from cars. Well, the only time they're going to turn down the music from their blaring is to place their order, to hear a blaring of an order sheet. So those are my biggest concerns, is that drive-through. I appreciate the fact that they've done a lot to address the aesthetics. If this were approved, would it be better than what's there today? Yes, aesthetically. But will it be an improvement in the quality of life of our abutting property owners? I'm not really sure of that. So I think with that all said, that my biggest sticking point, again, is the drive-through. I don't know how you eliminate that, except to completely eliminate it and not have a drive-through and stick with the rest of your plan. But those are my comments at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. My comments are ones that are similar to the last time we met. I do think that this substantially meets the architectural standards that are presented for the Planning Board to consider. There are many items that it does cover and that it supports. And my one concern with regard to the look, and a couple of members have mentioned that, some of the objectives are that there be an improvement to the streetscape, that there be an improvement to the existing, that the buildings that are there now be raised and replaced, that there be fewer curb cuts. There's a whole host of things that your proposal, I think, satisfies. And in my opinion, you've moved forward to a position where this is a more attractive road project, much more attractive than it used to be. And I do think it substantially meets the architectural standards and objectives that we've set. But with that said, I'd like to remind the applicants that this vote, should we take a vote this evening, requires an approval of four members of the Board. One of our members is not here. And so I would entertain any concerns you have, Mr. Tardif, as to next steps you would like us to take, because our option here is to vote, and there is no appeal process, as I understand it from Kathy. There's no appeal. So I'd like to take into consideration your, the level of work and intensity that you've put forward here for your consideration as to what you would ask us to do, and we will then vote on that request and see where that takes us.
Do you think I could have one minute with my client?
Certainly.
Thank you. We'd like to move to a vote, please.
Certainly.
You can do it either way. You can either continue the public hearing in case you had any questions during your deliberations that you would like to ask of the applicant, or you can close the hearing and have your deliberations now. I just would like to note that I think if, I don't know how you're going to, but if you were to approve it, you may want to add some additional conditions specifically related to the acoustic fence along the north property line, abutting the residential zoning, have it that, an STC rating of at least 26. And then you might also want to set some decibel levels at that property line, if you were considering moving forward through it. But also, as you're discussing the vote, being clear on the specific reasons why you are not voting for it. Just like you need to give supporting findings of why you're voting for it, we need to kind of have some ideas. I think some of the things that have been mentioned are related to the detriments to abutting property owners. May not outweigh the benefits because of the noise fumes from the drive-through and the queuing area, and maybe some concerns about how the drive-through and the gas station and convenience store does not promote a Cape Cod village environment and does not meet the road intent of the road bylaw, something along those lines.
So I need to, I would like a member of the Board to make a motion with regard to this application.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Saban?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the road bylaw proposal as presented with a few modifications. One is that the the acoustical fence be a requirement of the project. Not sure about decibels. I got to admit that I never realized that getting back involved in town government, that I'd get an education on sound as much as I have with this meeting, and certainly Kathy can attest to our Drive-In Site Committee hearings with regards to sound. So I don't know if I could set a decibel level, even though I feel like I've been educated about decibels more than anybody on the Board, unfortunately for me. So my motion would be to accept the road road application with the stipulation that acoustical fencing be in place.
Along the entirety of the northern perimeter?
Yes, ma'am.
As shown on the plan.
That's already the case, isn't it?
As, I think it's shown on the plan.
Yeah, I don't, based on the discussions tonight, Mr. Saban, I don't think we need to have that as a condition unless...
The acoustical fence is there along the northern property boundary line. I think what we would only want to be saying is the type of fence, different types of fencing have more reduction in decibel levels than others. And I believe that's where we were talking about, having an STC rating of at least 26.
Okay. So it would be that specific?
If you would like. It's up to you.
So, Mr. Saban, we'll amend it with the condition that the fence have an ST rating of 26.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. We'll take a vote.
Any deliberations or...
Oh, deliberate, any, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Jim, I'm sorry. Did you say, so nothing on a decibel level? No restrictions there?
No, only because I don't think any of us are professional enough to pick a number, to know exactly what decimal levels are. And like I said, I've listened to a lot of conversation about sound, and I'm still not prepared to tell you what that number is.
If I may?
Please.
They've already said in their letter that the decibel levels would be between 42 and 44. That's true in your, with what you're proposing.
Yeah, that's written.
So suburban areas at night typically have a 40-decibel level. A whisper is at a 25-decibel level. A household refrigerator is at 55. Every change in decibel level is significant. It's not linear. So I just wanted to give you an idea of what some of the decibel levels are.
You kept those notes from Drive-In Site, I can see, Kathy.
No, I printed it out just for this.
I think something in there would be helpful, because it gives, it's a little more concrete. It's measurable.
And it also might mean that they have to do something later down the line
Exactly.
To meet the requirement.
Requirement. So I think it would be important to have it in there just to satisfy the abutters.
So I heard, I heard you say 40 decibels, Kathy, is...
40 decibels is identified as a suburban area at night. So this might be what you kind of hear from the background noise of Route 28 in that general neighborhood. And I believe you were saying you were actually going to be providing between 42 and 44?
Right. Which is lower than the normal conversation level?
Normal conversation is between 60 and 70.
60 and 70.
Refrigerator's 55.
So would we like to further amend the condition to include the 42 to 44 decibels?
I would set a decibel level, not...
Right. I would set a decibel level. And if, do you think you can get it down to 40? With a fence with a little more STC? I would...
Yeah, I mean, 40 is, that's at night, right? You said, so even if you go during the daytime and you measure, it might be higher than that, you know? So you might, if you have no traffic from the drive-through and you have heavy traffic on Route 28, you might get higher than that, you know? So I think reasonable is 50 decibels. Maybe not. Still, I don't know if you had, do you have conversation level at your...
Conversation level is 60 to 70.
That's lower than conversation level. I mean, even with 50, I'm being reasonable here, because I, you know, but again, whatever you're comfortable with, I think maybe over certain hours at night, maybe after past 6 o'clock or 8 o'clock, you may say you cannot exceed that. But like I said, even during the day, you might get a reading higher than this just from the traffic on Route 28. That's why I asked if the town had any, because, I mean, 50 seems like a really stringent number, even with other communities that I know of. So, I mean...
I'd like to have something in there. I think if it's quieter than a household refrigerator, I think that that's good. That's a 55 decibel. So if we can say 50, you've already got in here perhaps it's 44 to 42 from the speaker. And we're talking about from the speakers that is the noise. It's not Route 28, because Route 28 is already there. Cars are already going down there.
That's why I'm saying, yeah.
So we can't change the decibel level of Route 28. Our intention here is to make sure that the sound coming from a speaker
Does not increase over what's there.
Right. Is not irritating.
Yes, Ms. Britta?
So how do we enforce that? How do we, do we build it into the...
There's a decibel reader. You can actually go and read the decibel levels.
But can you regulate it if it gets...
I think would, I think if it's a...
He's saying that the volume on those speakers can be controlled.
Can be adjusted.
Yeah, can be adjusted.
So you...
So let's play this out. The neighbors say it's too loud. They call someone at 2 o'clock in the afternoon and say, get someone down to here, because the noise is crazy. If someone's available, they drive down with the reader, and they say it's whatever, it's high. It is noisy. We get the traffic. Then what happens? Who do they go to?
I think you go inside, you say, turn it down. Just like when the police come to a house party that's too loud, they knock on your door and they say,
Tell the kids to turn it down.
Turn it down. Don't make me come out here again, please. Again, good neighbors require two good neighbors, not just one, right? You've got to have two people that want to get along. And if you can do that, we live in a happy world.
So you're, we're saying 50 decibels? I got that right?
Yes.
So we're suggesting less than a refrigerator?
Are you making a motion to amend the motion, to add in a condition?
Exactly. That's why I asked Jim if he had had it there. So I would amend Jim's to include the 50-decibel reading from the speaker. From, yeah, speaker, not Route 28, because like I said, that's already there.
So it's maximum 50-foot decibel reading at the property line by the speaker?
Madam Chair, Jim has his hand raised again.
Mr. Saban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ken. I guess I'm having a hard time with this decibel issue. If 60 is a normal conversation, I'm not sure how they're possibly going to be able to set the speaker to anything less than what a normal conversation would be. be able to set the speaker to anything less than what a normal conversation would be. So if I were to amend my motion, it would be to that level that Kathy had indicated is a normal conversational decibel level. Other than that, I think it's, I mean, if you make it 50, nobody, you're going to hear people going, what'd you say? What'd you say? And that kind of defeats the whole purpose of it to begin with. Second of all, I don't know if the town even owns a decibel meter.
Right. That's valid.
So, I mean, if you all want to put a decimal number on it, but I mean, we've got to be reasonable in the number. And I think, you know, what a typical conversational voice of, what did you say Kathy, 60?
It's, normal conversation is 60 to 70, but I think is what you can tell from Hell's letter, that the further the distance you are from the source, the decibel levels go down. So you literally, to be 60, or at 60 in a conversation, you'd have to be standing right on the property line with nothing and no barrier in between.
Conversation level, may I add also, is between two people that are two feet apart, three feet apart. You're not shouting across the room. So conversation level is a close distance. The further you get away, as you said, the, the decibel level drops based on distance.
That, that's my point. And I think if it's from the speaker that you're measuring and not from the?
Right, right. I see your point, Jim. Right, right.
If we're at conversational at the speaker, then by the time it gets out to the property line, it's going to be down to probably that 50 number that you're talking about.
That makes, that makes good sense.
Yep.
So just to be clear, right now, there's a motion on the floor by Jim Saban to accept the road application 2023-1 as presented with the following conditions. Having an acoustic fence, having the STC rating of 26. And then, and that was seconded by Joanne. And now are you, what is the proposed?
I would say...
Are you proposing to amend it?
Proposing to amend that to include a decibel reading at the, of 60 or less.
Okay, so to amend to include a maximum 60 decibel reading at the property line by the order speaker?
No, I think Jim's intention was to have a decibel level of 60 at the speaker.
At the speaker.
At the speaker. Correct, Jim?
That's correct, because by the time it gets to the property line, it will be down to those 50 numbers.
It'll be down to the 42 to 44.
So if we start at 60 at the speaker?
Thank you.
So right now?
So the applicant has suggested 50.
Right, no, I mean, I...
Different locations.
Different locations.
We can, we can set it at maximum 60 at the speaker, that's...
That's actually easier to measure. And right now, you're saying it would be 70 typically. So you're saying you can reduce it to 60 at the order speaker. So, but that's four feet from the order speaker? The 70 decibels at a distance of four feet on access from the speaker. So are you, is the motion to make it 60 decibels from four feet from the speaker?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let me... So amend to include a maximum 60 decibel reading four feet from the order speaker. And that was an amended motion by Chris and yet to be seconded.
I'll second.
So the vote would be on the amended motion.
Any further deliberation or comment on the amended motion?
Only this, Madam Chair, is that we all need to understand, oh, did I raise my hand? I guess I did. That this is only one part of this process, that it would still go to the ZBA. And the ZBA would have an opportunity to, to discuss the issues of the drive-through itself, which I am somewhat concerned about.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good reminder that this is essentially they're at a stop sign. And we're giving them either a green light or a red light, so to speak, to move on to the next step and, and, and with the zoning board of appeals. This is not approving the project. It's merely allowing them to take the next step in the approval process. That's a good clarification. Thank you, Jim. Any other conversation or deliberation? We ready for a vote? Susan Britta?
No.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Chris Vincent?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. The amendment, the road application is approved. Vote four to two, four to one, sorry, excuse me.
One recuse.
One recusal. Attention?
He didn't recuse, I mean, he's not voting, so he doesn't count. Sorry. It's not abstaining in any way, yeah.
Thank you very much.
We may have a motion to close the public hearing on road application 2023-1.
So moved.
Seconded.
We'll take a vote. Susan Britta?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Chris Vincent?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. I'll note the time at 7:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll continue our meeting on, on next item on our agenda are our zoning amendments.
Susan leaving?
Yes, I have to go.
Oh, okay.
Okay, first up is the accessory apartment bylaw amendments. Kathy has provided us with two new drafts. One is a, is a new option that addressed some of the concerns at our last meeting, especially those that reflect some comments made by town council. Kathy, why don't you run through the?
Yes.
That you've provided for our consideration here this evening.
Draft 14 continues the conversation of whether we wanted to have the second homeowners. Previous discussions had been, instead of allowing the carve-outs for some buy rights, we were going to go all with special permit. And if we're doing that concession to people who are concerned about that, should there maybe be some other concessions? Some of the other comments that we received at the listening session, one of them was related to second homeowners. Everything that you see here is just a reiteration of the comments that were discussed at the last meeting and kind of approved by, by the group. Unfortunately, when I talked to town council, he was like, there's really nothing that can be done with regard to the owners. So if you're saying owners can do it, it needs to include everybody, corporations and LLCs. So I guess that's kind of the question. The other application that you, or the other version that you have in front of you is version 15, which goes back to the original of it being primary residence only. So we have two kinds of things that we're talking about this evening. One of them is second home ownership and whether we're comfortable with that definition that town council says we need to have, including corporations and LLCs, because we can't discriminate based on type of ownership. But it's okay to have it be a requirement for primary residency, which is shown in version 15. So version 15 would not allow for that expansion to second homeowners and we would require a primary residency.
So with regard to these, these draft 14 and 15, one, one comment I'd like to make, since I did a bit of research on owner definition. The only town amendment on accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments, Harwich has a definition of owner. And it's a very general definition. It's who's ever listed on the regist, on the deed. And it doesn't go any more specific than that. No other town has a definition of owner. We don't have a definition of owner in our, in our bylaw right now. What triggered the town council's comment was when we specifically identified a second homeowner. And he felt strongly that there be a definition. And that got us into a fair discussion last time. So what Kathy has done is given us the opportunity to maybe, and a good point was made by Susan, that with all of our public meetings, and we had many of them, we have never put forward that definition of owner. So in all of our public outreach, this is brand new material. So as we look at, again, our objective of getting something that hopefully we can all agree on, if we step back and try to avoid the issue of a, a new definition being added to the amendment, one option that Kathy provided was to kind of take a step back and move to a place where we wouldn't have a definition of owner, but we would not include second homeowners in the population of, of homeowners who could have an accessory apartment. And that is what, I believe, that's 15, right Kathy?
Correct.
So I need to, we need to get some sense of, of the board as to the next steps here. We are missing two members now. And we are up against a pretty significant deadline.
Yes.
This needs to be finalized.
I think we need to finalize what you want to present at your formal public hearing, which is going to be scheduled for September 20th. That doesn't mean that you can't hear more from the public and make amendments after that before you present it to the Board of Selectmen. But you guys should be comfortable with what you're presenting to the public as something that you would like, be willing to put, put forward.
And our next scheduled meeting is September 6th?
Correct.
And does that give us time to deliberate one more time with the two members present?
It's, it's, it's a little difficult because I need to be writing the public hearing notice sufficient for people to understand what we're proposing to do, which needs to go in before the 6th. So it can be somewhat general, it doesn't have to be exact, but I think something like primary residence and second homeowner, that's a big, big difference. You know, how we define the parking, you know, with regard to the location, some of the changes that we're making with regard to that, that would be relatively minor. But I do think you need to have a discussion and figure out kind of where you settle on that. I think your point is well taken of how we move forward with an amendment that we think will have the most likelihood of being approved at, at town meeting and not being amended on the floor of town meeting. So it's kind of a double edged sword. And I know that Jim hasn't been around for a lot of our, our conversations with regard to this last few meetings, so he may have some other insights that haven't.
Right. So I guess I'd like to do kind of a round robin here as to where members of the board are landing with regard to these two options and a path forward. I'm struggling a little bit to try to get us on a path that will be successful. Again, I am concerned that two members aren't here. And I would like not to have to have another meeting in August, but that may be our only option. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, I think our whole intent since we started this whole project about ADUs has been to try and get something in front of us and something that we could take to the floor of town meeting and hopefully have it pass. You know, as I look at draft 14 and draft 15, you know, draft 14 touching on second homeowners and looking at the definition of owners, I have a problem with it. I really do. Is I think that one of the things, you know, allowing, I understand legally we'd have to, if we're going to have that definition, definition in there, we have to have it written this way. But I think we lose control to some degree over the oversight of properties and people with having an ADU and having it say, as a manager, officer, shareholder of a corporation of an, or LLC, LLC. Who's going to control that? Who do we know is really there? And how do I know that that person's a shareholder of an LLC that's overseeing that property? It's not just Joe Blow living there, renting out the second house, is what we tried to avoid for the whole time here. And that's what we keep talking about, is having it be a primary residence or a controller of that property and the second home being for whatever utilization that it needs to be used for. So I think it really, having that definition of owner in there and having it spelled out, and I understand the legalities of it, I think it takes us down a slippery slope.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slovac?
I mean, I would agree on that. I would agree on Ken's points. It's, the primary resident requirement, I think there's going to, an automatic oversight. And, and I think it's without the primary resident, I think enforcement's going to be more difficult. I know I had those questions last meeting and I know Mark, you know, talked about it a bit. But having a primary resident there, I think is going to, not in every instance, but in most, kind of lead to a greater enforcement of what's required. So, and I think the public during most of our outreach liked the primary resident requirement. I think that was a lot of the comments that came back to us, was that, that's what they were looking for.
Mr. Saban?
On this subject, I do have others, but on this subject, I would agree with the last two speakers, that part of our intent here is to have, you know, some people are concerned about both the character of their neighborhoods. And being good neighbors will exist if there's a primary resident there and not if it's a second homeowner that, that may, you know, the scenario being that, you know, your ADU tenant decides to have a party all weekend long, but the second homeowner's not there to supervise that and say, no, 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 you can't have 200 people here. So I think I would agree with the fir, not I don't think, I know, I agree with Peter and Ken, that I think a primary resident needs to be part of this.
Okay, I, I agree. So I think we're all...
May I?
No, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I'm tired.
I want to get home too.
I, I'm tired.
I apologize.
That's okay. Just a quick disagreement. The intent of this is to provide housing. That's the intent of this. The, the words and everything else in there is just a byproduct of that intent. That said, I'm going to agree with the rest of you. I've been going back and forth over this. And I think it's a better idea to have somebody occupying the main house while that ADU is there. The reason is because I think that's the way to get it passed before town meeting. I think we all know that if a, a second homeowner wanted to put an ADU there so that they could come down in the season and stay at their house, but then also rent out, that's great for the people that need housing. Town of Barmouth doesn't want to do that. It's what it sounds like to me. So I will take the lesser of two weevils because the intent on this is to provide housing. So I would say that primary resident and if we can make that fly by the, the Attorney General, then...
Oh, I think primary resident was. It's in many other accessory apartment ADU bylaws.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I apologize, Mr. Vincent. I, I think it's the, it's the least risky course.
Yes.
Quite frankly, I think there's far less risk involved with approval at town meeting with this language. And Mr. Slovac reminds us that we heard loud and clear from many residents in town of their interest in having it be a primary residency requirement. So let's then focus on draft 15. We'll put aside draft 14. Any other comments? And I, I believe in the past, is, I know that Mr. Rubenstein has, is, I think has been okay with the primary residence, because we started that way. And I, I believe, not speaking for them, but I believe Ms. Britta as well, having remembered some of their comments from the past. So with that, looking at draft 15, again, with the, the outcome here that I'd like to be able to deliver for Kathy is draft 15 could be the starting point for a public hearing notice. So I need to open to discussion if we're in, in, in that mode. Mr. Saban?
So first, let me apologize because I haven't been to these meetings, but it appears that the committee had made a decision that I was not at the meeting for. We originally agreed that there was some good compromise under eligibility... We originally agreed that there was some good compromise under eligibility, and I apologize, my screen isn't turning up fast enough, I think it's 407.3, where we had three carve-outs, you all recall those carve-outs, and it looks to me as though the board has elected to remove those carve-outs and make everything a special permit. I'm okay with a special permit. However, the reason we're saying it's a special permit, at least what I'm hearing, is that, well, the ZBA always passes things. So if the ZBA always passes things, and we're going to make this special permit, and you want to take those carve-outs away, then I would suggest that a special permit still be allowed, but instead of a 15,000 square foot minimum requirement for two bedrooms, we take those requirements away, because after all, we think ZBA is God and they're going to do the right thing, then let them do the right thing. You know, part of this was a compromise. I was willing to compromise on, on the carve-outs, but a compromise means that I give and somebody else gives, so I'm willing to give up those three carve-outs, but in exchange, I would like to eliminate the 15,000 square foot requirement for two bedrooms. And again, it's, at the ZBA is going to be able to be the final determiner and not us.
I didn't see if those had been eliminated. No, they're gone, so.
Do you want to go through it?
It does not. So we're saying that this draft 15 would not require special permit.
It would require only special permits, no carve-outs.
Only special permit, Chris.
Everyone has to get a special permit.
And my point is, if we're going to do that.
13 had that as well.
I see it's deleted in there. Yeah, I didn't notice that that was deleted. I like, I would like to see that stay. It's going to be a primary residence. We want to help them.
I think the only consideration is, I think, the significant amount of public comment that we went through in, when the July meetings, where we went through all the listening sessions and all the comments that we got, the biggest trepidation seemed to be related to special permit. Right now, accessory apartments are required to have a special permit. So I think people were feeling that they didn't necessar-, some people may not have fully understood all the carve-outs. They may have had some more concerns about the, the second carve-out, which was more lenient than the, than the first and third one, but with the idea of trying to move forward with something that might have the potential of passing at town meeting, we would start out with special permit. As you know, zoning bylaws are very dynamic, and if three, you know, years from now we find that this is going very smoothly and it's not problematic, then you can take a look at it and see whether some carve-outs would be, would be amenable. But the gives on this bylaw right now, the two huge things are, you're not restricting who lives there anymore. Doesn't have to be a capital A affordable, you don't have to set a rent, you can do market rate rents, and you can rent it out to whoever you, whoever you want, and it doesn't have to be limited to a family member if you're not renting it out. So you have a lot of give, I think, in this bylaw right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms., Mr. Saban?
Although I appreciate Kathy's comments, I don't believe them to be gives. If they were gives, then we wouldn't be here today with these discussions. We're not giving anything that way. That's why the original bylaw was defeated, and we're back to this today. So I don't think we're giving anything that way. The, the three carve-outs, number one, again, I think Kathy's right, some people just don't understand. If I have a three-acre piece of property and I want to build a, a house with a in-law apartment or whatever, a accessory unit, and it meets all the rest of the criteria, why in God's creation would I need to come to this, to the ZBA for a special permit?
Exactly.
Now, if you want to keep that, then give me something in return and take away the 15,000. Again, well, I'll say, and the ZBA is all wonderful and going to do the right thing, so then let's let them do the right thing, take your carve-outs away, and, and reduce the 15 to 10,000 square feet, whether it be one bedroom, two bedroom, or studio. Then we'll put it in the hands of the ZBA and all this discussion.
I, we, we had our meeting with the ZBA, and I don't, Jim, you were at that one as well. I, I don't think they, I think they want the guidance of the 10 and 15. I don't think, my feeling is, is I don't feel they want to be the ones to decide.
I think what, what Jim is saying is that 10,000, as it is now, 10,000 lot size would be the minimum. Right now, in the, in the draft 15, it's 10,000 minimum for a studio and one bedroom and a 15,000 minimum for a two-bedroom. I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that we've also have the provision that sets a maximum of 800 square feet for studio and one bedroom and 900 square feet for two-bedroom, but it's whichever is the smaller of the 50% of the habitable area. So how many, for someone to be able to have a size large enough for 900 square feet, you'd have to have at least an 1,800 square foot habitable area.
Right.
Within your home, and we have a lot of exclusions to that, so there's probably not that many of those that are located on a small 10,000 square foot lot anyway. And I also think that when you start going to two bedrooms, you start talking about septic issues, and then you, it might be, you know, something that people, it might be more of a family, and people might be, oh, I'm fine renting out and having a small apartment for a single person or a couple, but, you know, that's a whole different scenario to be a landlord for, for a larger, for a larger unit. So I question how many second, how many two-bedrooms you're actually going to get in general, and, and then that 50% habitable area really plays a bigger role in, in kind of limiting the size of it and what can be on these smaller lots.
Kathy, correct me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith, go ahead.
But Kathy, correct me where I'm wrong, didn't the town attorney have issues on, on draft 12 with the carve-outs, and that was part of the reason why we brought it up at that meeting? I thought there was a comment from the attorney specific to the carve-outs.
I'm afraid I don't recall anything specific from town attorney on the carve-outs.
I thought he did, but.
Oh. I'm, we're on draft 15, so.
I realize that, but I thought he had an issue specific to the three carve-outs in draft 12, and that was part of the reason we brought it up as a topic when we did.
I can check.
If you could, please.
I can, I go before town boards a lot as a builder, dealing with special permits and ZBA, and that's why we had that whole list of how many lots in town would conform to this, and most of the ones that are 10,000 and 15 will be going to the ZBA because of existing lot size, things that the ZBA already requires. Right? So this is just out for those few, very few, that may be able to do something on their lot by meeting all of the existing zoning bylaws and not having to go to the ZBA. They meet the offsets, they meet the percent lot coverage, all those kind of things, frontage, all that stuff. Why force them to go for a special permit? To me, it just didn't make sense. But for the small lots, of course, they have to go before the ZBA because of all those other issues. You're going to put a second home on, on the lot potentially, or expand, they got to make sure that they meet the offsets, all those kind of things. So that's, that's what that little out is for. It's not for everybody, they're not going to have to go through special permits. Most of them are going to be going to the ZBA.
A couple of things. One, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we're not going to go backwards and revisit things that I think the majority of the board has already agreed upon. When we got to draft 13, where the comments from council were included.
Thank you.
We had already agreed to strike this permit procedure and requirements. We had already reached a consensus that that's what we heard from the public, that they would prefer that it be special permit only, and that it was, it was the consensus of the board that we would strike the carve-outs. That's the copy that went to the town council.
Yeah.
Town council didn't have any comments on it because it was redlined.
If there was something previous to that and before we started redlining it, I'll double-check and see whether the town council had a specific comment on it.
Okay.
So.
Madam Chair?
I appreciate your, your comments, Mr. Vincent, but I, I think the, the board had reached a consensus with regard to the carve-outs.
It's like telling someone they can go swimming and saying, but let me tie your hands behind your back first. That's all.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
Again, I apologize, I was not at the meeting where you created your consensus. I would not have been a part of that consensus. I, and I'm sorry that I have to bring back something that you all felt like you've discussed, but I'm at the point that I amended it at town meeting floor to reduce to 15,000 square feet, and I don't think we want to do that, but I am adamant that if we're going to take away the carve-outs, then take away the 15,000 square feet, or I will amend it at town meeting floor.
I appreciate your, your, your concerns here, Mr. Saban, but why don't we have some discussion among board members before, quite frankly, you threaten to take an action that could undermine what we've been working very hard on here for almost a year. So let's have some reasonable discussion with regard to the 10,000 square feet. 10,000 square feet is what we have right now for one and two bedrooms. It's what's in the, it's what's in the bylaw right now that we've been living with. The question is, do we want now to change that? And I am open to discussion as to where we might go with that. So I need, I need to get some consensus from board members as to how we want to approach the 15,000. Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, I don't think, and I guess I'm trying to answer for Jim here, I don't believe he's trying to change to 10,000, because I wouldn't be in favor of that. But I, you know, you look at the 100 square foot difference between one and two-bedroom size unit, depending on the size of primary dwelling, I wouldn't have a huge issue with having it be a one- or two-bedroom, 10,000-plus, meeting all potential requirements with a maximum up to 900 square feet.
So Mr. Saban is, is suggesting that under 407.3 general standards and provisions, section three, dimensional requirements, that we strike, minimum lot size shall be 15,000 square feet for two-bedroom accessory apartments. That's his request.
I think you would just say.
That's correct.
Minimum lot size shall be 10,000 square feet.
Period. Right. Period.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, yeah.
One thing that Ken did mention was changing, because right now, studios and one-bedroom can only be 800 square feet.
Right.
You mentioned, so you're, you're saying.
But we're quibbling, I mean, I won't use the word quibbling, it's probably not the right way to put this, but we're talking about 100 square foot difference, a 10 by 10 room.
So that, that then would allow a 10,000 square foot lot to have a two-bedroom unit.
They can now.
They can now, but they would need to have at least an 1,800 square foot home in order to be able to do it.
Be able to do it.
At 900 square feet.
Sort of a self-limiting size.
The percentage, the percentage ratio is what, is the, is the, is the main hurdle.
You could leave number six, which talks about this alone, make the one, and I think, like I said, I think the majority of people are going to be interested in a one-bedroom when you start looking at septic, especially on these smaller lots.
It'd be the bigger issue. It's a small lot, you're not going to get a two-bedroom septic. That's why, you know, as Chris pointed out, when it comes to requirements, you're going to have to meet them all. So if they can fit a two-bedroom septic on a 10,000-foot lot, square foot lot, then God bless.
So Kathy, what, what you're suggesting is, is leave six alone?
Well, I, I guess I just wanted to highlight the fact that not only was we talking about changing it to just minimum lot size of 10,000, but he was also talking about maybe not differentiating between the studio and one-bedroom maximum size and the two-bedroom. It would just be, we can't do any more than two bedrooms, we already say that, and just 50% habitable or 900, whichever's smaller, is what you're suggesting.
That's right.
I, I guess I'm confused.
So, so right now, the.
You've got the 800 square foot requirement.
Yeah, the studio and the one-bedroom has the 800, so it would just be 50%, 900, whichever is.
That's right. Whichever's greater, right.
Oh, okay.
Smaller, yeah, smaller, you're right, smaller.
I'm sorry, okay. So you understand what that changed?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the most important thing.
I just want to be sure that you understood that it was two, two changes, not just one.
Yeah, it'll be changed to section number three, dimensional requirements, and section number six.
Yep. Yes. Easy to do. That's the least of our problems.
So, so we're not saying it's not possible to have a two-bedroom unit on a 12,000 square foot lot, right? It's still, it's still possible, all right? I mean, we're, we started to say, well, you need at least a 19, 1800 square foot house. I mean, because they're going to, there were people that wanted us to raise the baseline of 10,000 to 11,000, 12,000. We heard other people that weren't even happy with that. So if the likelihood of this is small, then why not leave it? But if the, if there's a chance that it could happen and could impact on a butter, if you can have, take your four-bedroom cape and turn it into a duplex with two-bedroom main and a two-bedroom accessory unit, so then you have, two bedrooms means more occupants, more cars, more people. So I'm just saying, I said, can it happen? And everyone's, oh, no, you know, it's not likely it'd happen, you'd have to have an 1800 square foot house. Is it possible?
Of course it's possible.
Yeah.
But it would all be going to the zoning board of appeals.
Right, yeah.
For review.
And you'd need to meet the other criteria with regard to the two and two parking spaces and the screening of the neighbor and some of the other criteria.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
Unpossible, but extremely difficult.
Is it not my understanding from what Kathy just said that currently it is permissible under the existing, the two-bedroom?
Right now, I don't believe it references the number of bedrooms, it's just a maximum of 800 square feet and a minimum 10,000 square foot lot.
Well, then why don't we take the number of bedrooms out of there and just leave it at that? And again, if somebody wants to do a two-bedroom, then they still got to come to the ZBA and meet all the criteria.
I think, Jim.
And I, I got to tell you, Madam Chair, I don't feel as though I'm threatening the board in any way. I apologize that I didn't get to this hearing. I've made that concern known because I don't want to surprise the board at town meeting if this is what happens. And, and it's not a threat, it's just to tell you that it's something that I believe we should do. And if we're not going to do it and, and we're making compromises left and right, then, I mean, I would recall the Board of Selectmen said to us, the carve-outs were an excellent compromise, yet the first thing we want to do is eliminate the compromise. Remember, I'm not just the only one saying this, and just because people have been riled up by their neighbors to come to the, our meetings and express their displeasure, doesn't mean there's a whole lot of people that express their pleasure. So I don't want to base everything I've said and heard on a group of people from certain neighborhoods who have been riled up by certain individuals to have certain concerns and, and not listen to the overall logic of a bylaw. Yes, we've, no, I don't like that, but that's a distinct group of people who are, in my opinion, brought there because of fear. And the people that are sitting at home having cocktails tonight at whatever hour you guys are at, I'm only at 4:45, so I'm waiting for my cocktails, haven't expressed their opinion, yea or nay. We've only heard nays, and that's typical of any board hearing. You'll get the nays, but you won't get the yays. So just because we've heard nays doesn't mean there's not a lot of people out there that say yea.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate your opinion there, Mr. Saban. And again, my, my objective here, our objective, I think, together, is to get something on the floor of town meeting that we can all get behind, one way or another, so that it can, at least from the planning board perspective, be a, a, a document that we can all support. So I just want to get back to these two changes. A suggestion has been made that we don't reference bedrooms. I, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm not sure how other members of the board. I think the language we have on this, we've gone through this several times already. Again, as I said before, I don't want to go backwards on this. There's nothing limiting about that language or, or dangerous about it, I don't think.
You mean in six or in the minimum lot?
No, in, in six, when, when, the, the whole discussion, bedrooms.
Madam Chair, I'm not suggesting we eliminate the number of bedroom requirement. I still am in favor of keeping it at two bedrooms. My suggestion is eliminate the 15,000 square foot requirement.
Yes, I, I hear you loud and clear. That's the, that's what, that's what you are recommending.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So can I get some sense from the board as to where we want to be on the 15,000?
I'm not in favor. I think the 15,000 seemed to be something that in all three of our outreach meetings, people seem to like, and I think it's, I think it's fair to have in there if there's, if the likelihood for it is less than, so be it. I, I just think the way this has moved through our meetings and our outreach meetings, I just think the 15,000, to me, seems like it makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I wouldn't have an issue dropping the 15,000 requirement on the two-bedroom. I think there's enough control points post this, meaning getting a two-bedroom septic system installed to keep the 10,000, if somebody wants to try and see if they can get a two-bedroom system in there, let them go for it.
Actually, a four-bedroom system, right? Because you've got the main house.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Vincent?
Figure.
Mr. Vincent?
Yeah, I'm wishy-washy on this one. I see both sides of this issue, and I don't really have a serious problem with either one. Knowing what I do about zoning and the restrictive nature of these small lots in the first place, I'd be okay with dropping the 15,000 if it has to stay in there to pass town meeting. Again, the intent of this is to provide housing, and that's my focus.
I'm okay with it dropping back to the way it is now in our current bylaw at 10,000. And I know Mr. Saban is as well. So, now we have, we have, we need a new draft, I guess, Kathy?
It's easy, yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
And we need another meeting.
Okay.
That would be just this. And it's got to happen before September 6th.
It actually can only happen next Wednesday because I need to notice it.
Yep.
And I need to have, it's like five days to get it in the paper, and then it needs to be noticed.
So, August 20th.
Is that what it is?
I believe that's next.
No, August 23rd.
It's the 23rd.
I can't add, I can't speak.
It's August 23rd.
23rd.
You give me a minute, I can go and check, maybe with Dave, to see if this room's available. That's my only concern.
Okay.
Whether it's been booked with something else.
That would be available 23rd. I know that now.
Okay.
And I can't do the week after, Madam Chair, so...
How about you? I can be here next week.
If I have to be here next week, I...
It would be only this.
Just one, there's one item only, correct?
This is all that would be. Can you attend remotely?
No. No, I won't be around.
Is it the time of day?
I'm off, I'm out.
Are you out, out, out?
Yeah.
Best we could do is look on the town calendar, there's nothing booked for the 23rd, so why don't we go ahead and say the 23rd? And I will confirm tomorrow to make sure we can book this room.
Mr. Slovac is not available, but we know your sentiments. And should they change, would you let Kathy know between now and then? I too, again, I think the hurdles that are in place, especially septic and every other code that they have to go through, is more than enough protection. And layering on the minimum 15,000 square feet, I think, is just an added layer that, I don't think it's a layer of protection that we need. And it's going to the zoning board of appeals. So, we've got a couple of layers of review there. So, we just need to make sure with Will and Susan Breda that they can make it next week as well.
So, everyone can make it except for...
As of right now.
And Jim's good?
Mr. Saban, can you join us next Wednesday?
I'm sorry, I just, I have air conditioning in my van, but I did hear that the 23rd, is that correct?
Yes.
I will find a place somewhere in the United States to be online.
Okay.
I hear Missoula, Montana has great reception this time of year.
It wasn't bad the first time I went through there.
Okay. You have enough to work with, Kathy?
Yep.
Okay, sign. Kathy's produced for us packet of signed amendment?
I'm sorry, just one confirmation. We're not changing six, we're just changing this minimum lot size to 10,000.
Just three, right.
Just three.
Okay, got it, thank you. Yeah, what's in your packet is I just took our kind of conversation from the last meeting and kind of turned it into an article and then kind of gave a brief explanation. This is really to allow for that installation of additional signs on town-owned properties to acknowledge the granting of naming rights, allowing for sponsorships, or accepting of donations, to help provide for some other alternate source of funding for the town. And these signs would then be regulated via a yet-to-be-drafted board of selectmen naming rights, sponsorship, donation sign policy. We do this already with the roadway banner signs, the slat ladder signs, and also the fundraising and special event signs. Those have been essentially take, referenced in the bylaw, but references the board of selectmen's policy that would be what would be followed. It's easier because making changes to the policy is a meeting with the board of selectmen versus a public, I'm sorry, a town meeting vote of two-thirds in order to change the bylaw. The little section I had highlighted there, unless otherwise defined in the selection policy, I highlighted that because that was added from the last time. The only thing town council had was basically saying a permit from the building commissioner is required and then taking out, but no fee will be charged because fees are typically related to something outside of the zoning bylaw. I think we should probably keep it in because we have lots of things in the sign bylaw, and I attached that, so you guys had the full reference of the sign with the insertion in there. We have already identified a bunch of other signs that don't need fees associated with them. And now that I think about it, we might need to add that, reference this type of sign in that section of the bylaw as well, and I'll double-check that.
Madam Chairman, may I ask two questions?
Yes.
I know that this, it's a little vague because it says it will be based on a board of selectmen sign policy, which we don't have, we don't know what the policies are. My question would be, is this for both temporary and permanent signs?
These are for permanent signs. The phases may change in the sense that, for example, like at the Riverwalk Park, we may say, the event space at the Riverwalk Park, sponsored by blankety-blank, and maybe the town sells the rights to that naming for five years. And then that sign changes out to whoever buys it again.
Makes perfect sense. My only comment would be, and I guess this is just going to be for the board of selectmen, that the supplemental signage ought to be smaller than the big signage.
Yes.
Whatever the main signage is, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's some other references already in the bylaw for some of these types of signs of like three square feet, so we might want to think about it a little bit and draft up some, try and draft up some language. I'd also like to run it by other town staff because this isn't just for, I'm Riverwalk-centric, obviously.
It'd be the TD Riverwalk.
No, it's, no. The idea was to like keep the park name the same, you're just naming certain components within the park, because then people will always know it's the Riverwalk Park or whatever, ultimately, the name gets chosen.
Thank you.
But, it might be good to have that some ideas drafted, so the board of selectmen aren't like, well, what are we talking about here? Just to give people an idea. We did the same thing with the banner signs. We got it out of the bylaw, but then we kind of had a bit of a draft for submission to the board of selectmen, so they knew what we were thinking about. So, yeah.
Any other concerns or questions on, Ms. Kathy, do we need a, if you're going to shop this around now?
I think the only thing I would do is take out the unless otherwise defined by the selectmen's policy, and then I think that's what, this is what would be advertised. And then maybe in the interim, not for our next meeting next week, but maybe for the 6th or something, it would be good to have some ideas of the draft, what the policy might entail. Location, what's the maximum size, what are the different types, you know, building signage and that type of thing. Most of our freestanding signage and our building attached signage are related to the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts, the business zoning districts. But, a lot of our town-owned properties and recreation facilities are in residential zoning districts. So, this might allow for some additional signage that's not allowed now. Might mirror the business to a certain extent.
And are we under the same time constraint to act on this next week?
Yes, you'd need to let me know if you want me to advertise this for the public hearing.
And these two would be on the public hearing?
The accessory apartments and the signage, correct. Yep.
So, we'll do both of these next week?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Can we, or can I, can we make a motion now to accept the language as it's written here now?
Yes, with the yellow part removed, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay. So, let's move this along. So, may I have a motion to amend section, am I going to say, you tell me if I'm not saying this right, 303.4, signs allowed in all zoning districts? Do I have to read the whole thing?
I think you can just say, you're going to vote article, zoning article number two, signs, draft number one, August 7th, 2023, as written, except for removing the highlighted section of unless otherwise defined in the selectmen's policy.
Okay.
So, you're comfortable, if you're comfortable with this, with that edit.
Okay, so, what Kathy said?
So moved.
May I have a second? Was that you, Chris?
That was me.
Yeah, thank you. Let's take a vote. Mr. Saban?
He's muted.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Great.
Oh, we're getting to the end. Please.
We have meeting minutes from June 21st.
Oh, it was a long time ago. Where was I? Oh, I was here.
Yeah, may I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June 21st, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
And myself, aye. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 2nd?
Madam Chair, before we do, Jim Saban has his hand up.
By Mr. Saban.
No, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I forgot to hit the hand down.
Okay, no worry. Motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Any committee updates?
I do have a wastewater update. We finally, this past, I think it was yesterday, actually, had DEP come down and look at the site where the proposed treatment facility is going to be, which is a positive sign. They also went and took a tour of the town and looked where some of the pumping stations are going to be, where Phase 1, Phase 2 are proposed to start from. The last I heard, everything was very positive, and they are moving forward, and hopefully soon, we'll see a groundwater discharge permit from DEP, which is exciting news. The, you know, the two other pieces from our meeting this past Monday is one, everything still is on schedule and on timetable to start Phase 1, Phase 2 of the actual groundwork, sometime late September, early October, which is exciting. They're working now with the school department, the fire department, the police department to, you know, what roads are going to need to be closed, what routes the fire departments, God forbid, would have to take if there was an issue. And also working with the other towns in the lower Cape, Dennis, Harwich, Chatham, to make sure that their emergency equipment getting to Cape Cod Hospital understands what's going to be going on here and understand what routes they'll have to take. And there's actually planning on being weekly updates to those fire departments from the Yarmouth Fire Department to keep those towns updated, which was huge. And some of the, one of the most exciting pieces, I thought, that came out of the meeting was, now that bids are actually coming in, they're not estimates anymore, is actually at this point right now, I believe the number, if I, is $9 million in savings come off from what they had proposed as a budget to what's coming in as actual bid. So, that's also wonderful news.
Any other committee updates? Kath, any correspondence or any other additional staff updates from you?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that originally in our schedule, we were going to be going to the board of selectmen for their meeting on October 17th. They have now asked if we wanted to come on the 10th instead. The 17th is the last day where they would be seeing us and they'd be closing the warrant. The 10th would give us a little bit of wiggle room. I think we'll be ready for the 10th because we're having our public hearing on September 20th. We still can talk about, deliberate after that meeting, which we've done many times. And then we also have another meeting on October 3rd, I believe, that would still make us be able to submit something for the October 10th. So, I would recommend that we take the October 10th and gives us a little bit more leeway.
Okay, we'll take that slot.
But, it's a question, I guess, I mean, you have to make it for sure, and then as many board members as possible.
I'll make sure I'm there.
Okay. And then, one of the things that I had sent out to everybody was that the board of selectmen are going to be looking at their goal setting, I believe it's this Saturday, and as part of that, they had looked for staff to provide some updates with regard to their 2022 goal, priority goals. And I had sent out to you, I had given an update on the local comprehensive plan. And actually, it was a nice exercise because it made me feel a little bit better, because we have completed the draft open space and rec plan, which basically is going to be all of the LCP sections on the natural resources, a natural systems section, which is the large portion of it. The housing production plan is another vital component for the LCP in that the draft update went to the board of selectmen two meetings ago, and they did have some comments, and I think they were hoping to have, I had mentioned before, a workshop together and to see whether they make some edits, and it may end up coming back to you guys for final approval. We have completed through an MVP grant, the infrastructure vulnerability assessment, which was looking at, we did that with the town and staff and Woods Hole Group, and that's something that we can really incorporate into our coastal resiliency section of the LCP, so that's a good chunk of information. We also have funding to update our hazard mitigation plan, we've got grant funding for that, so that's another component of information. We do have a couple economic studies that are being done. There's one that's been funded by CEDC for an economic development analysis that was spearheaded by the assistant town administrator, and basically looking at some optimum economic conditions to promote the type of new growth that we would like to see on Route 28. And then we also have applied for a community planning grant, which will help us to, you know, generate an actual plan to outline how we encourage that mixed-use strategies. We've gotten a lot of people saying how difficult it is to do mixed-use, and maybe there's some strategies that we can utilize to facilitate, you know, a coordinated growth in both housing and employment, especially along our commercial corridor. I had mentioned previously that we had had a request for proposals that went out in May and was opened, was meant to be opened on June 1st, but we received no proposals. I did query three firms, and basically, it was heavy workload and lack of staff for reasons why no proposal was done. Town staff did meet together to try and come up with another game plan, and I think what we're going to do is try to reissue the RFP now that we have the open space and rec plan completed, and the people can see that that's a huge chunk, as well as the HPP. We're also going to have the capital infrastructure and facilities plan be drafted by staff. I mean, Bill Scott's all over that with the capital improvement plan and capital budget, so he offered to be able to write that. And then we'd take a look at extending the completion time and then also try to more widely advertise it and do some more direct solicitation. I had sent it out to three firms that I had worked with previously directly, saying, just so you know, this is out there if you're interested. So, we're going to try and do that with a bunch of additional firms. So, that's the next update, kind of with regard to the LCP, so hopefully, that's something where we can set, put that RFP out, hopefully, within the next month unless things get sidetracked. I'd like to get that going. Unfortunately, it means our timetable is all messed up because I'm going to be less strict in the RFP with regard to when the work needs to be done. I think we just need to get a consultant on board to help us. And, you know, everyone's crazy, as everyone all knows, everyone's crazy with work. And then I also gave an update on the Riverwalk Park project, which is really coming along nicely with the permitting and bidding and as well as with some funding, just because that was also one of their goals to develop recreational assets for our community and also to promote economic development along Route 28. So, a good read.
Yeah, it was nicely done. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's that. And then just last night, Mass DOT gave a presentation to the board of selectmen and the public on the improvements that they're proposing along Route 28 from the Barnstable Town Line to the Parker's River. So, unfortunately, the timing is concerning with regard to when that work might be done and how it correlates with the sewer. But, they gave, they did a little flyover in the presentation, it was quite interesting to kind of see what's going on. There's some things that may ultimately come to you guys related to a zoning amendment of, we don't, if somebody's kids have non-conformity created because of a strip-taking, we don't want that to be used against them. So, there's some language that we might be able to do with that. There's also some concerns about, we all know that we don't have a lot of buffers in There's also some concerns about, we all know that we don't have a lot of buffers in the town of Yarmouth, and sometimes parking is really close, so if we're taking a strip for something, it may start impacting parking. The, the engineers looking at different ways where they could, might be able to replace that parking. It would all be part of the compensation to each individual group, but just making sure that we can make people whole again, or somehow give them the funding through this compensation to make sure that they're whole again. So it's a very complex, very interesting project that would really make a significant change on, on Route 28, certainly from the public realm perspective. And then just the next meeting, we have the draft open space and rec plan. It's gonna be presented, because we do need a formal letter of approval from the planning board. We're also gonna kind of take advantage of the great hosting duties that you guys take on some time and do a little bit of advertising to, to let people know that they're welcome to come and hear the, hear about it and offer any, any input. And also, we'll have the disability commission and the open space committee invited. And then the following night, we'll be giving a, a presentation, very, probably a truncated version to the CONCOM, because they did pay for the study or the open space and rec plan, and they did also form the ad hoc committee. So once all that's done, hopefully then we can get that to the Board of Selectmen. But I also wanted to put on the agenda for that meeting, because the 20th is our public hearing, so on the 6th, I'd like to include our officers' elections and committee assignments. We always do that sometime in September, so hoping to put that on the initial, on the first meeting in September. The only thing that I know of is I know that Will has indicated that he no longer wants to be on capital budget. So when you're thinking of what you're on and want to stay, we kind of need someone to maybe take over those duties on capital, on capital budget.
Madam Chair, I'd be interested in capital budget.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I just make one comment on the DOT plan? Just to tie it to what I talked about earlier from wastewater. First, my first comment on the DOT plan, which I've seen it, I saw it from the chamber, and I watched it on TV last night. I don't know if anyone hasn't seen it. It's pretty amazing if the whole thing comes through. Talk about a streetscape improvement for the town of Yarmouth, it's a huge one. But the DOT is willing to work with the town, understanding that, you know, if one storage goes down 28, they're not gonna make us repave the road to have it dug up, because they're talking 2028 fiscal year for that plan. So they are willing to work with us as far as closing the trench up and then just doing a drainage cover or a drainage cut pavement and not repaving all Route 28 to dig it all up a year and a half later, so. So that part's very encouraging, too.
Could save a lot of money, good point. Lots of things going on in the town of Yarmouth, for sure.
If everything goes through in 2028, it's gonna be a different town, so.
Certainly a different look. Anything else, Kath?
I think that's it.
Okay, anything else from any board members? Okay, thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Good. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Absolutely.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. Take care, everybody.